Order on the budget for 2021. Do I need a motion in all camp for a public hearing like this? No, public hearing's open and if there's public comment, how long am I gonna keep public? How long are we gonna keep the meeting open?
We can quit talking.
If there's no public comment, we can close it?
Yeah, let's give at least 10 minutes or so, we'll see how we got.
Do we have any public comments? In our upstairs room, is that open?
Uh, yes. Bob has Marskey's up there.
Okay.
Chairman Nelson?
Yeah, Bob.
Um, as of now, there's no public testimony from the West Conference Room.
All right, we'll just stay open here for a few minutes. All right, yeah, Vince, you wanna do just a brief overview of the budget?
I can, uh, just an overview, maybe save us some time later. Give you a general idea, this is the document here that we kind of put together. I would say this about this budget. We went into it with an eye for being conservative. One, because of just fundamental belief, we want to be conservative and spending taxpayer money. But two, because of the uncertainty with COVID and so on. So we actually kept our directions to staff to be flat, coming under, we looked for headcounts and so on. We put in here your county board's priorities. The reason is because we put an eye on these for long-term impact type stuff. We wanted to make sure that the budget should be a direct reflection of that. With that in mind, the tax levy calculation summary, which is something I think you all are always interested in. You can see that not only is the allowable levy, it was 22.8 billion. My proposed levy was 22.4. We came in about $400,000 under the allowable levy. So that, along with the equalized value of the county, which is improving nicely. Our mill rate dropped from 4.2, 4.525 to 4.270. Uh, which, you know, it's in terms of dollars for a citizen, it may not seem like a whole lot, but every little bit counts. I think it'll send a message. The other thing I would emphasize here is in terms of FTEs. We actually kept FTEs flat with, uh, but we did shift some. And we moved some that were maybe not as, as important now, or maybe they're not as busy. And we took those FTEs and shifted them to law enforcement, environmental services, and then also the new parks and trails department. And then what we'll get into, I think, in the discussion, I'll just show you this page. Obviously, I get a number of additional requests from organizations, people, departments, and so on, that maybe are outside the norm. Some of those I accept because they do meet the goals and objectives. This page right here is one that I initially said no to. But we leave it for you to take a look at them because you may want to make a policy decision as a group to say, we want to include that. We present these to the committees and you'll see if the, in the bold letters on this page. You'll see, for example, the top one in forestry, environmental services committee recommended it. That it remained for a one-year trial basis. So when we get to the, uh, resolution portion of the meeting. This is when you guys can discuss and agree to this, or you can say, I want to do something else or add some of these. But these have all gone in front of the committees and, and if people have had the opportunity to comment on them.
Couldn't have done it any better. We have no Corporation Council sitting in the room, but Malia's on WebEx.
Malia is available online. There she is, smiling at us.
Evening, everyone.
And Chad is also online?
I'm here, Chair.
You don't want to wave?
Hi there.
He's out in his garden right now.
Yeah, where is he?
Oh, I'm in my oasis. This is my virtual background. The CIP is, it's in the back part of that handout you were provided.
Oh, yeah, it is in the. Keep going in this document. It's in the back of that. Keep going. Oh wait, you got it over. You have one there with a river on it. Yeah, there you go. You'll see it in there.
Let's change from this one.
It's the same material supervisor O'Connell, I just put it in a condensed version for you for tonight. The only thing that has changed is the additional funding request for a policy. I made a few notes on it and updated it for you guys, otherwise it's the same.
Guys will note that we have our director for buildings and facilities here, Rod Polk. So that, be sure, be sure that there's ice or salt out on that front sidewalk, right Rod?
There is. Do we ask questions now or later?
My understanding was you would ask them later when we discussed the resolution, but.
I think this general discussion right now where we're sitting around might as well, Doug, if you've got something.
I was asked one question and that's.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead. Yep.
I was asked one question. Museum annual funding, our full-time director. And we spent the summer trying to donate because they were asking for military artifacts. And nobody's there. So is this the wrong time to be looking at that or, or, you know, I don't know.
I'll give you a, if you've been in committee meetings or not, where we discussed that was discussed. They came to us this year for the first time, asking for us to help fund a full-time director. Uh, they've asked now for $25,000 a year, which we pay for about half of the salary, I think. Uh, my original proposal, because they have a full-time director who's gonna be charged with fundraising, marketing, doing some things to raise the fairness of it. My recommendation was a $10,000 one-time fee. See what they can do with this. I mean, it's a worthy project. I think people feel like the history of Polk County is rich. We want to pass that. We do fund the building repairs and so on. The General Government Committee, I believe it was, voted, an amendment, and at least voted that they accept that we do the full $25,000.
But it's not us, Ken. They first came to us and asked us to have it as a county employee. We said we didn't want a county employee. And we discussed helping them out by paying half. They went ahead and hired a director now, regardless of what we do. So, you know, I felt like they're making the commitment. They got a whole new board there and, uh, they, uh, so what General Government did is we kicked it around. It wasn't unanimous, I think it was three to one, that we would go ahead and fund that. Kind of like we do with the EDC and the tourism, we give tourism 70, we give EDC like 40 towards salary. So we said, General Government's consensus was, we'll pay 25 grand a year towards employee. You guys handle it, you handle the benefits, we don't, you know. So that's what, that's what came out of General.
Just, just so you know, if I can make this comment, Malia, our Corporation Council email said. Since this is a public hearing, we should not debate the budget yet. Yeah, I don't know if you could say we're debating it, I guess we are, but at least we got one question answered.
So as long as we don't debate, we can have questions, Malia?
Right, this is the public hearing, this is the opportunity for the public to provide input to the board. Any matter that was, um, published in the administrators' presented budget. If there is no public comment, and it does not appear that there's anyone in the West Conference Room. And I presume no one has contacted the county clerk to try to appear remotely to provide public input on the budget. Unfortunately, the discussion of the budget can't happen until you've actually called the full meeting to order. Because the public would not have prior notice that now would be the time you would be discussing the budget amongst yourselves. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so can we call the public hearing? Can we end the public hearing at this point, or do we have to stay public hearing until 6:00 AM?
My, my suggestion was to maintain it for at least 10 minutes to see if anybody that had technical issues. Um, and it's beyond that, so I think you can call the public hearing to a close and then, um, plan on actually convening the full board meeting right at 6:00.
All right, motion like that if anyone wants to. Joe Demling makes a motion to close public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Rod. Any discussion about that? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Means closed. Now we can talk, Doug.
Well, then we got a public meeting.
Not till 6:00.
Not till 6:00.
Hey Sean, I see, I see Supervisor Pritchard in the attendee list. We'll need to make him a panelist, please.
Was that wasn't in the General Government meeting?
Yeah.
Was that 25,000, is that a one-year commitment or an annual commitment?
Yeah, I mean, it can be debated tonight because it wasn't in this budget, so that's gonna be one of those things that we're gonna need the board. It's, uh, 6 o'clock and, uh, we have our second amended notice of meeting and agenda for Polk County Supervisors Tuesday, November 10th. Either evidence and opinion of proper notice, that'd be the clerks.
County Board of Supervisors November 10th meeting notice and agenda was posted in the Government Center Building in two places. Posted on the county website on October 30th, 2020. It was published in a legal newspaper the week of November 2nd, 2020. In addition, the Office of the County Clerk distributed on Friday, October 30th, 2020 at 2:52 PM copies of such notice meeting, of notice of meeting to supervisors via email or mail. The two amended agendas were posted on the county website, posted in the Government Center in two places, and distributed to the supervisors and media contacts via email. On Tuesday, November 3rd and Thursday, November 5th, 2020.
Corporation Council, does that need the proper notice?
Yes, it does.
A roll call?
Brad Olson.
He's excused?
He's.
Oh, he is online? He's not excused.
Well, you know, Webex, Doug Rowdy.
Here.
Steve Hornedal.
Here.
Chris Nelson.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Ian Rook.
Here.
Michael Pritchard. Michael, it looks like you're logged in as the wrong form. Can you check your email and try and log in as a, as a panelist? I just sent you an email with the information. Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Tim O'Connell.
Here.
Amy Middleton.
Here.
Steve Luke.
Here.
Grant Dunkinson. He's also excused, I believe.
Yeah.
Russ Arkand.
Here.
John Bonifides.
He's excused.
And Joe Demling.
Here.
13.
Okay, we stand for pleasure, uh, Luke, is that good?
Yeah, 13, 13, yep.
Pleasure allegiance. Pleasure allegiance.
The fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation of God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Number five, we'll just have a raise of hands. There's a conflict. Um, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion.
Second.
By Luke, second by Demling. Any discussion about the agenda? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side, carry. Matters offered for adoption on consent agenda. Do we just handle them all together? We have a motion by Supervisor O'Connell altogether. Is that your motion, Supervisor?
Yes.
Yes. There was a second by LeBlanc. Any discussion? Any none? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carry. Number eight, written public comment summary. I don't have my glasses on.
Okay, so a total of two written public comments were received by the County Clerk's Office for the person at meeting, November 10. One comment was opposed to limiting public comment and was in support of allowing verbal public comment at county board meetings. Uh, the other public, public comment was regarding a newsletter from the Midwest Environmental Advocates. That had a letter signed by three supervisors that was sent to Wisconsin County's Association. The comment expressed appreciation to the 12 supervisors who did not sign the letter and was opposed to the content of the letter to the WCA.
Okay, thank you. Uh, number nine, video presentation regarding Government Center mechanical updates being presented by staff.
Yes, yeah, this is, it's actually gonna be photos, but, uh, you know, our orientation was postponed for a variety of reasons. And some people, some supervisors have said, really, it's not gonna do me any good to go through and look at this equipment and so on. So I asked Mo to put together a photographic tour of the site. This is not seeking an answer tonight or anything, it's just something so, it's bringing folks along to see what we're talking about. In terms of mechanical needs of the building. And then Mo will present kind of what we think may be a good way to keep information coming to you going forward. So, Mo, you're on the line, you wanna go? Oh, we can't hear you. You have? Go ahead, Mo.
Okay.
How was it, Rod, just take over?
Is that why you're here, Rod?
It is why.
Okay, great.
Just in case.
Maybe he is at home, Mo is, and his bandwidth and so on may not be capable of providing this. So, Rod, why don't you give it a shot?
All right. Move to the next slide. So, hey, you can come right up here too, because you can see better than that.
I have it here too. So the boiler room, our current boilers are 1974 and 1998. We have steam boilers with steam traps and all associated piping.
Rod, could, could you come up to the podium so we could probably all hear you better?
There, Mike, you want me to?
Radio bug, you know?
Yeah, it's hanging. All right.
So our current boilers are 1974 and 1998. They're both steam boilers with all associated steam traps, piping, and the such. Um, they are not high efficiency, they're 80% efficient. Uh, most of the, uh, insulation and everything around all the piping and all the valves, all the 90s are asbestos potentially, probably. Because they're 1974. Uh, if there ever was a, uh, an asbestos survey done, there's no record of it that anyone knows of. Um, I've looked and we don't have one. Um, our current system doesn't handle the build, uh, building humidity, it's not at industry standards. Uh, we have water piping leaks, we have water piping that's leaking on electrical panels. Um, and a lot of this isn't, I'm in charge of maintenance, so I know a little bit about that. It's not a lack of maintenance, it's a, it's more of, uh, age of a lot of this stuff. Um, I know, uh, Mr. O'Connell was, was here when we were repairing the water fountain out in the hallway here. What turned out to be one leak, as we're repairing it, because it's galvanized piping, it turned out to be 15 feet of leaks. Because of, it's rotting from the inside out on the galvanized piping. So the new boilers would be high temp hot water boilers, we'd get rid of all the, the, uh, steam associated function. Uh, they'd be 90 and 95% efficient, depending on what models we go with. There'd be combustion air, uh, feed tank and, and pumps would go away for the steam side. Uh, the new system, we'd be able to control the environmental conditions better. Next slide. So this is a picture of the, uh, some of the steam coils when you have a steam coil burst or, um, they're, actually. If anyone knows anything about coils, I'm probably gonna dive too deep here, but, um, they're actually paper thin, so they, they can burst quite easily. So then you have to remove the fins and, and fix the leak. And then the other picture on the right is the two boilers currently. So all the piping that you see, all the white insulation is more than likely asbestos, uh, but we'd have to get it tested as well. Next slide. Uh, the left-hand side is our current chiller that's currently down for this building, so I know, uh, Vince, we've been sweating him out several different times. In his office, and if you've been at any of the meetings here lately, they've been warm in this building, that's because the chiller's down. Um, and it's 1995 and we can't get parts for it anymore. So that's part of the reason why, that's under our maintenance agreement with Johnson Controls, and they're having a hard time getting parts for it as well. The picture on the right is some venting. So how our piping works here is the vent right next to the garbage can at the bottom, and then there's one right on top. So here and here. So how it's designed is through convection, it takes warm air up and delivers it through that chase. While those piping chases are not insulated. Our piping is on the outside building walls, which by design is not very efficient or well. So anybody that has one of those vents in their office, you get, you feel like it's cold air coming at you, there is no forced air in any of these. Um, so if it's in your office, they, they close the vent. So, and so you stop your circulation. We've actually had to have, in this particular one, we put a fan in that to force air up through, because we keep in, in this room and then above us. We keep slushing and freezing the pipes on the outside walls here. So that's one of the design flaws that we're gonna look at. Upgrading with the renovation. Uh, the next slide is our current generator, the 1974. Uh, it's our emergency backup power for our 911 system. For any of those of you that are into farming, that's a 4020 John Deere, um, motor. So that was last built in the, I think this is a 1969. So we're gonna look at probably upgrading that, maybe into the 70s model, maybe 80s. Uh, but obviously that is, uh, on its last leg there as well. The upper right picture is one of the original 1974 phone patch panels. That were, would be, uh, in the old jail area downstairs. Next slide. The, this is the plumbing leak I was talking about that ended up being 15 feet worth of piping needed to be replaced, as opposed to just that one leak. Um, our restrooms currently aren't ADA compliant, so we would, I know there was some discussion on how we would, we're not adding any space to those restrooms per se. We're gonna utilize the space that's currently in the footprint. So there's a, in the women's restroom, there's another little closet, so we'd be able to reconfigure what we have in that space to make them ADA compliant. Uh, the stairwells, uh, the runs and the handrails do not meet code. That's, uh, in the big scheme of things, that's a kind of a small, um, small dollar item to make it ADA compliant. But in, in a renovation like that, you can, uh, get everything back up to ADA compliant. The next slide is what our current view is entering the building. And then with our new greeter, what the, so as you walk in the front, what it would be is this room would turn into, um, the, uh, ADRC as well. And also the veteran area. So then all of your customer service would be coming in the front door. And most of the people, clerk's office, treasurer, um, you know, ADRC, that's would all be right here at the front door. As opposed to having to go downstairs and find, you know, if you're using the elevator, if you're using the stairs, find the ADRC or the veterans' office. Uh, so the proposal would be to get A and E, A and E services, so, uh, architect and engineer. Uh, hire them, so then they can go through and look at plumbing chases, duct work. There's a lot of these, all these are gonna be tied in together, so if you're gonna replace air handling units, you're gonna replace duct work. You're gonna go into your plumbing chases and the walls, a lot of the walls and stuff would, um, be renovated as well. Um, they would come up with the hardcore plans as far as what the entire scope of the project would be. I know we had talked with, uh, higher wall, wall, um, to, uh, do our original, uh, planning and everything to see what our needs and our space needs were. And they did a great job on, on compiling all the information there. So the next slide, um, with this building being a 1974, it was originally designed as a courthouse, so it's not, the flow isn't very good for where people need to go, what they need to see. And especially with ADRC and the vets, you know, we, we only allow the traffic in the top door on the main level now. So they'd have to navigate their way downstairs and, um, so it kind of fragments everything that we are trying to do. As far as being more customer service oriented and, uh, public centric and everything like that. Next slide, so moving forward with the project, we'd have, uh, walls and ceilings, like I said. So as they're going through, if we're gonna do a lighting upgrade in here, they'd do a ceiling upgrade as well. And I know a lot of people will ask, well, you know, the ceiling looks like it's in good shape. But to take it down, put it over on the side, and then have to put it back up is, you, you're not saving any money by doing that because of the labor involved with that. Uh, so our biggest goal is to, the improvement and access for the elderly, the veterans, um, you know, be more customer centric. And then also obviously upgrade all our mechanical. And then also obviously upgrade all our mechanical, get us back up to where we need to be. And, uh, next slide is the analysis did show us that, uh, you know, we're beyond our critical infrastructure. The fragmented departments, customer confusion, inefficient systems. And that comes down to lighting, your HVAC systems, uh, plumbing, security, uh, all the way through. So the A and E services would set up our plans on exactly what steps we'd need to go to, where we'd need to start, whether it would be with the boardroom upstairs, where we can move this up, then we could renovate this for the ADRC to move and the vets to move up here, then we could, you know, just kinda domino effect it, you know, they come up with the entire plan on what to do there. That's it. Any questions for Rod? Uh, Supervisor Mordell?
So when we get to the, at some point, well, we have kind of a couple proposals to look at, sort of like the cats meow, and then maybe a whatever. The cus- you know, get the vets up here and deal with the HVAC issues. Just trying to see if there's gonna be sort of just one proposal, or are we gonna be able to see a couple options?
Originally, there was, it was considered like a two-phase project where they would do all the mechanical as one, and I believe that price tag was too shy of six million. And then phase two would have been the office restructuring of everything, and that was, I don't have the numbers, it's currently two million. Um, so currently, those are the only two proposals. So that was just the phase one and the.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Yes, Mo.
Um, wo- wo- thanks, Rod, you did a great job with that, um, what I could hear. Um, with going with A and E services, that will give the board, um, opportunity as they go through the design of the, um, the, the updating of our, uh, infrastructure to have more input on, on how the flow would be, because once we get into design with the mechanicals, then we're gonna really know what walls are breached. Um, what we did to date now is just an analysis, uh, which showed us what we have. The A and E services would get more into the nuts and bolts of how it would look, what breached, and, um, how that, uh, updates would go, and that way the committee and the board would have more input. Some plans would move forward with, um, step by step with the plans at wa- at ninety percent, thirty percent, and sixty percent.
Hey, Mo?
Yes, sir.
Can you explain to the board, you know, some of us went through the project with the construction manager, and explain to them why now the proposal is an A and E versus a, a hiring a project, um, or a construction manager first, the process, I think you kinda did it, but I don't know that everyone understands. Why are we proposing to do it this way this time, and we didn't do that way on the highway shop?
Uh, sure. Um, at, at this way, as we get up into design at thirty, sixty, more, more likely at sixty, sixty-seven percent of a design is getting pretty close to what you're gonna have, besides some final tweakings. At that point, um, it makes more sense versus bringing the, the construction manager on early in the process. We can bring him on when we know we need to go off for our bid schedules and to start managing the project from construction point at that phase. Um, if we brought him on now, they'd basically be just helping us with the RFP for A and E services and waiting for the design to get to sixty-six percent. So we can go out for RFPs on our own for the A and E services, uh, save that step right now, and then once we know our project, go out for project management on that side.
And I'll just throw in one comment. One of the reasons I, I would support doing an A and E first here is because we could develop the project first, and then we can fund it versus the old way would be put this lump sum of money out there, hire a project or a construction manager, and personally, then I think they generally would use the budget. And I think for us to really get a handle and have more control on the board is that we could follow this process, working with A and E as architect and engineer. So we're gonna hire an architect and engineer first to work with the board to figure out, here's all the mechanical work, here's all the demo work, here's where duct work, plumbing. Then we can probably kick the can to say, I've heard a lot of supervisors say, why are we moving the boardroom? Or why are we moving people around when the building, you know? I've never had a complaint on someone coming to the building and saying, you know, I can't find the zoning department. But the thought was, is if we do the A and E first, then we have more control of what the project looks like when we have to actually vote on funding a project.
So anything else on, any other questions for Mo or for Rod on, uh, the building, the equipment? What the scope of work might end up being, anything feels like it was missed or?
Joe? Um, I talked to like, uh, ADRC veteran, and I was here, a couple of gentlemen come in in wheelchairs, and they have a struggle going down that elevator. Can't make the steps. And both Laura and veteran guy says that that would be an excellent idea, because that would help the elderly a heck of a lot. Being that you can't park down there now. You come in that be back doors.
Any other questions, Supervisor Mordell?
Well, it's a, it's a long haul for somebody in a wheelchair or walker to come in that entrance and make it to that.
Um, you think this'll, will this be handled, a project like this, when we finally vote on? I, I don't know what the proposal is, is that it's gonna be coming to us to approve an RFP or A and E. Are we gonna do this as a committee of the whole, or is this gonna be done through a committee? Has anyone decided on that, or have any recommendations? Or are we gonna do a committee of the whole, with all the supervisors are aware of what's going on every month? I think we did a committee of the whole for the shop, didn't we?
Yes, we did, everything was presented with committee of the whole.
So probably hearing what I'm hearing today is that maybe that's, this should just be a committee of the whole, so everyone can have their input as we go month to month, right? Okay. So maybe next month's agenda, we'd have it on the committee of the whole to discuss and have, and we'll approve an RFP or vote on it next month, Mo?
Okay, yes, I'll start putting some together, I'll put an RFP together on, on that, uh, for next month.
Any other questions? All right, seeing done, um, thanks, guys.
Chairman, just, I just wanna thank Rod Polk for being, uh, there to step in with the short internet I have, so appreciate all he did for that, thank you.
County Board Chair Report. Uh, well, just the normal, uh, following up everyone's concerns about what the county's doing or what I'm doing. Um, I did talk with the DNR again, I've talked to them multiple times this month. Supposedly this week, uh, the county is going to get some type of, uh, a letter that's held up in their legal team, so this is the week we're supposed to, uh, I talked directly with James Yak, and, uh, so this is the week we're supposed to get more than a, we're working on a letter. Um.
On the Star Trail, you mean?
On the Star Trail, uh, master plan, yep. Uh, one of the other things I just wanted, sometimes it's hard to get out to the public, and a lot of comments on the recycling center closing. Uh, there is no proposal to close the recycling center, that resolution will go back to general government for a better presentation. We'll put it on the county board next month. And, um, but someone had put signs out on all the recycling containers, bins around the county with supervisors' names on it saying, recycling center's closing, call your supervisor or me. Um, they, uh, they're not closing. The resolution is to improve the recycling program, and actually, if people follow general government, um, they realize we talked about adding additional bins in the county and making our recycling program better. The whole discussion, been in general government for months, is how do we shut the faucet off? Because we're losing so much money and the building needs so much work. And that led me to Endeavors, so I talked to the Director of Endeavors. They were the ones that were probably mostly concerned, because they have approximately four or five clients that have worked there forever. Um, I was assured by administrator and by the, um, Mo that those jobs would not be lost, even if the recommendation a year from now, so it's a year from now before we talk about the recycling center or voting on what the his, the future will be. But, uh, I've been guaranteed, and I pass it on to Endeavors, and I'm going to their board meeting next month, and they were very pleased to hear about it, that, uh, none of their clients would be out of a job. And that Mo and administrator both said there's probably more opportunities for Endeavors to find work, there's lots of projects. So I'm gonna go, kinda get to know those guys and bring them, maybe I even ask for them in December to give a presentation of what they do. They have approximately a hundred clients right now, and, uh, they're excited to kinda get back engaged with the county, and maybe we can find even more opportunities for them. That's all I have. County Administrator's report?
Okay, I'm gonna give just a brief COVID overview, and then I'm gonna turn that over to Tanya for the details. But here's my number one message that I think we all need to convey to our constituents and to the public at this point. That is that we are seeing a significant surge in COVID-nineteen cases. Tanya will get into the specifics, but we are, we are increasing, you know, I've been keeping track, we're getting over forty new cases a day. Uh, we have five hundred and thirty people currently in isolation. My message is this, it's very important that all citizens recognize that they play a role in controlling this virus. So we ask that everybody use their common sense, practice those good behaviors, such as wearing a face mask, uh, good hygiene, social distancing, uh, not going into crowded places. It's everywhere, so we wanna make sure that people are doing what they can to keep themselves safe. You can't look and say, that person has it and that one doesn't. So using good common sense, I just ask all of us to step up in Polk County. As for this building, we are continuously looking at how can we improve our safety. I think hats off to the staff, we've done a pretty good job, uh, relatively few cases in the county building. Uh, but we have gone back now, uh, we will be having a larger percentage of people working remotely. We are not having face-to-face meetings, we are not walking into offices, talking to people. Instead, we're doing it with our new technology, web acts and phone calls and those types of things. And, uh, and obviously, we're all wearing the masks now on a more consistent basis. So we, as the citizens of Polk County, can make a big difference, and I ask all of us to take this, you know, with the appropriate level of urgency, and let's get this thing under control. As a sidebar, we've read about drug companies coming up with vaccines. Keep your fingers crossed, they're making progress. Uh, the company I used to work for just has emergency approval for use for the treatment, uh, of COVID-nineteen. So we're making progress, but now is not the time to relax. Uh, as far as what we've spent to date, uh, Chad is informing, we spent just under four hundred thousand dollars here in the county for COVID equipment, supplies, materials, and activities. We think a very high percentage of that will be reimbursed to us. While I'm on the topic of safety, I'm gonna say this for the sheriff, who has said this on numerous occasions. I think we're up to fifteen total fatalities on vehicles in, in, for the year, that's a lot. And so we don't know why, is it because we have more people, is it because people's minds are distracted, they're under stress? I don't know what it is, but, uh, we need to be aware that, uh, safety is important regardless of whether it's a, an illness or an accident. Also, hats off to the sheriff, his department, to the St. Croix Tribe Police. If you haven't heard, he cracked a cold case from two thousand fourteen of the double, uh, hit-and-run fatality uh, uh, at, at near the Round Lake area, I believe. But that was a good example of teamwork, uh, of the tribe and, and the county working together, and Sheriff Walk and his crew can't get enough thanks for all the great work they're doing.
Any questions for the administrator or comments?
Why do we not have a receptionist out there? I've, I've come here the last three times, and every time there's nobody here, you have to go into treasurer's office or whatever. And there was a guy to come in today, Tammy was down here, and, oh, the guy was just belligerent. I don't have, Phil, I can't see, dah, 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 you know? But, you, you know, and a lot of them don't even know where these places are, and they gotta sit there and look, you know? And we always used to have one there.
Well, we just started having one since I've been around, it just started this summer.
Yeah.
And, uh, at this point, we have some, you know, it depends, sometimes people are out on illness, sometimes people are on break. We do have people that, that come in and fill in, so you caught them on a bad day today or a bad time. Generally, we have somebody there. In the new budget, we have a person that we are hiring, an FPE will go there, so we'll have more direct responsibility.
I have one question for the administrator, you talk about our budget this year. So what kind of, and maybe Chad would know this, what, you got these costs covered on COVID, you're hoping, you're gonna get reimbursed, but what kind of commitment is anyone reimbursing, reimbursing our costs for next year?
So.
You put anything away for the what-if? Obviously, COVID didn't go away after our recent election. Um, but what happens next year?
So could I speak to that, Minister of Administration? So the way we would treat it, Mr. Chair and, uh, Board, we would treat it the same way we did with the storm. Our present funding runs to the end of the year. You know, it's hard to tell if there'll be funding next year or not, although we are getting some funding in certain areas like GAM that's now running through June thirtieth. We would treat it the same way we did the storms, and we'd set up a special fund. You know, um, if it's not reimbursed, then that would eventually tax the general fund. If it is reimbursed, then we would pay that fund back, just like we've carried the fund for the last year and three months, as we're finally getting the money back from the storms. Uh, we had to carry that million-dollar fund until we got paid back. We would do the same thing. It's for the same reason that it's an unknown, Mr. Chair, it's also unknown how much we should appropriate to it, because we initially started with about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in COVID costs as recently as maybe a month and a half ago, and now we're north of four hundred thousand. So we have seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand in funding that we're allowed to take up until November eighteenth. Then we have some additional funding sources in Health and Human Services and GAM that extend beyond that. And then in talking with Department of Administration in, uh, Madison, I think some of the funding will be extended onward. But we will, we'll have to put it in a reserve fund and then apply for grants as they become available, same as we did with the storms.
Any other questions?
All right, um, appointment's made by County Board Chair. Um, the only appointment that I would have tonight to make is to appoint, uh, Supervisor Kelly to the, um, Museum Board now, or I, I don't know, what do we call it, historic, is it the Historical Society? That, uh, I would make that nomination. Um, I don't know if that's an appointment I just made, or is that an appointment that we want to get a vote on here tonight? I was originally gonna do that job myself, because it's the Balsam Lake thing, and Supervisor Kelly said she was interested, so be more than happy to, uh, let some of that maybe has a little more time to be on that committee.
I think you're okay, Malia, is that okay if he just appoints it?
Malia, is that okay if he just appoints it?
Yes, he can just appoint and announce, yeah.
Hopefully, there's no controversy with that appointment, Supervisor Kelly. That's the only appointment I have. Appointment's made by County Administrator.
Yes, I have one. As you recall, a couple of months ago, Brittany Fry became our interim health officer. We appreciate her service. She is also a full-time coordinator for the, I think it's a 10-county health symposium or consortia. She, you know, through her obligations there, wanted to dedicate her full-time to that, so she has gone back to that at her request. And so, I have appointed Tanya, who meets all the criteria and has done a great job. She will take over as our health officer until we hire a new one, which we are in the process now of interviewing.
Still vetting them out with the state.
The state has to vet them. So that is an appointment that does not need a vote.
It's just an appointment that you will make along with Tanya.
Yeah.
Well, no, her, she, her appointment as current health officer.
Oh.
That's the one you're making.
Right.
It's just a notification.
Yeah.
Okay, update on community service COVID? Is that Tanya?
I gave an update this morning at Health and Human Services regarding the COVID. So I'm gonna run through the PowerPoint really quick. I took out one of the slides and just added another little piece of information for you guys. I think you'll have to enlarge that screen, Sean. It's kind of hard to see back here in the back row. Go to the next one, I think that'll... And then go to the next slide. It's a little hard to see in the back, isn't it?
I see you.
Okay. So this is just showing you guys from the start of school for Polk County case increase, right around August 26th. This is, every little blue block on there is a two-week period of time. And the way the state measures it is on a two-week, it's a rolling two weeks. So they report the information to us every Wednesday at 4:00, and this is taken straight from the state's website. So back in August, at the end of August, we were holding pretty good with about 25 cases every two weeks, very manageable. The next week, jumped up to 38 and still manageable. Next week is 39 cases, still being very manageable with the staff that we had. And then we took another little jump up to 70. And then the next one is 109 cases in the two weeks, 146 the following two weeks, 199 the following two weeks. And the last reporting period, which ended on November 3rd, we had 282 cases during that two-week period. So at this point today, we're over 1,000 cases in Polk County. But this kind of shows the trajectory up of cases increasing faster than we can handle them, honestly, at this point. Next, the next two-week period that will be reported tomorrow will be even higher because we know our numbers coming in daily are more than the 40 a day. It depends, it can range from 70 to 100 a day. Weekends seem to be busy, and we're kind of at the mercy of the labs when they can process those cases and get them back to us. Okay, next slide? Just, go ahead, next slide.
Tanya, can I ask a question? You just said something that, so you're at the mercy of the lab. So those numbers are, they could have really been tested the previous week, but you don't get, you don't know for sure until the next week? Is that right?
Yeah, our numbers are, the state pulls that data from when the lab is processing those cases. So it could have been the previous weeks. Hopefully not, because they're on a fast track to get to us so we can notify the people that they are processing. So I wanted to get some comparable data, like the surrounding counties. Barron was much like us. They did the creep-up. What's significant for them in their last two-week period, they had 626 cases. Barron County's the same size as Polk County, so our 282 to their 626, I don't, I don't know how they're doing it. But that's pretty significant. I know on the call this morning, Sabrina, who's on our board, reported that there's a lot of activity in the schools and some of the factories, manufacturing plants in Barron County. So the next slide is our friends to the north in Burnett County. Burnett County, they kind of experienced a peak right mid-September. And Burnett County is one-third of our size. And now they've just kind of been floating, you know, 45 to 70, 78. So they're managing their numbers, but still significant numbers when their health department, I think, has two full-time staff. That's a lot to manage. And then we'll go over to St. Croix County is the next slide. St. Croix County, you know, we all started out pretty manageable. Last week, St. Croix County was at 799. St. Croix County is twice the size of Polk County, so maybe a little bit more manageable. But I know that they are having troubles contacting their positives based on a state call that I was on two days ago that they had 180 that were waiting to be contacted and assigned out.
I have a question for you. How many days are you behind, would you say, when you say it's not manageable? What specifically is not manageable, and what are you falling behind in?
It's the time that the, there's a, we find there's a bottleneck between the nurse being able to actually get ahold of somebody and have them respond.
What nurse?
Our public health nurses.
Okay.
So there's a chunk of time that is involved in that disease investigation, and then the close, identifying who the close contacts are and having the contact tracers, which is another team, go out. And they don't go out, but they notify the close contacts that they need to be on quarantine. So what we've been doing over the last weeks is every day looking at our process and streamlining and finding where we can cut so we can get those contacts notified so those nurses are just focusing on contacting positive cases.
I've had experience. I'm a COVID survivor, don't have a problem with it. It's not a dirty disease. And I, yeah, I have experience with it, personal experience. Polk County did nothing, in my case, to contact anybody. And that was weeks ago. So I'm just curious on what you guys actually do. Because I can tell you what, the work wasn't contacted. My wife's church wasn't contacted. They didn't even ask the questions. They didn't call a single person. So, you know, one thing to say, all this started when the school started. But I'm trying to understand, what does the health department actually do? Can you walk us through that process?
Absolutely.
It seems like you're kind of saying, this is all due to schools opening.
No, I could go back to the beginning of time on this.
Okay.
So I just went right around school starting.
Sure.
There's no implication that schools are the hot?
It sounds like there was. Just so you know, your presentation sounded like you're saying, hey, this is when school opened, here's our rise. So I want to be clear, is that what public health is saying or not?
No.
No?
No.
So it has nothing to do with schools?
Schools are a part of it. I'm not gonna lie about that, but they're not the driver.
Okay.
They are the driver in Barron County. We were told that today.
Sure. Who you told that by?
A nurse practitioner from Cumberland.
The one person? You don't want to hear about this, Administrator?
No, I do.
Well, you sound like you're giving me that sigh to quit talking.
When we do the disease investigation, it really depends on what the person is willing to tell us. We have a lot of people who won't even talk to us.
What about the people that talk to you? Because I know we talk to you as a family, and you've followed up with nobody.
I would have to look at...
I'm just telling you what I know.
I don't know, I don't know what you were told, so I will follow up on that.
Sure.
Okay, I'll do that tomorrow.
Well, I don't need it, it's over with, we're all fine.
So the process typically is that we contact the positive case, identify what their onset date was. From there, we work on who their contacts are. It's a matter of who they tell us that was a close contact based on our definitions. Sometimes people are, I think there's kind of shock that they actually have it, so they forget. They'll call us later and tell us, oh, I forgot I was in contact with this person or that person. But once we get who the close contacts are, then they turn that over to that other team to contact by email. So there's no more phone calls. We had to streamline that, which a lot of the other counties are doing.
So once somebody takes a test, do they contact you guys first? Or do they contact the person? You know, like, if somebody goes to the St. Croix thing and drives in and gets a test, how do they get the results?
Typically, the hospital should be calling them with their results first, but sometimes that doesn't happen. Sometimes we're the first call.
Okay, so, but you always get notified?
Yes, through the state's database. It gets populated into our jurisdiction. But once we pick up the case, then we respond to the positive cases.
So who sends out the letters? Like, if somebody gets tested? Because I had a couple of people call me from St. Croix Falls that said so-and-so declined getting tested, but they got a letter in the mail saying that they were positive. And that was two different people that contacted me about that. And I meant to talk to you about that this morning and forgot, but I just didn't know the process, so I couldn't answer their question.
You would not contact anybody who we don't have a confirmed lab on, so it would have to come through that state database. That may have happened at the hospital level. I mean, I can't speak to what they are, how their testing is going and if that got mixed up.
Okay.
Okay, so, back to the contact tracing. If we're given names, we follow up with them. We don't do the telephone calls anymore. We're given an email address or we send it in the mail. We offer resources to them. We're available as a resource ourself if they have questions. And we set the quarantine period. So based on what the positive person told us, we go then and set the dates for the isolation period for the sick person and the quarantine period, which is the 14 days. So there's a 10-day period and a 14-day period. And it all depends on when they started having symptoms, when they became tested. And so the nurses work through all of that with them. So it's different for every single person that we talk to. It's not like, I got tested on this day, so I go 10 days from there. Once the 10 days is up, we contact them to release them from quarantine to make sure that their symptoms didn't get worse, that they needed a hospitalization, or their isolation period needed to be longer. It can be a little bit more of a lengthy process, and those are the... Because of the number of cases coming in, community-wide, all of the health departments can't handle the flow. So we're looking at, what is the quickest way that we can get people notified? Who are the priority groups that we need to be working with to be able to try to curb the spread of the disease?
So does, with the pandemic, does the HIPAA laws, do they get thrown out the window?
Nope.
Okay, well, I had some personal information get shared out of your department about me. I am also a COVID survivor. And there was a young gentleman that wanted to get out of school. Sweetie said he had contact with me. And the health department called me again and asked me if I had had contact with him.
So that person would have identified you? We would not identify that you were...
But then there were other calls made to other members of my family that were not identified by me that did not come from him.
I guess I'm not prepared to answer these specifics. And I'll talk to you guys offline.
No worries.
Yeah, my point of bringing this up, Tanya, too, is, I guess, as a, as a family that got COVID, right? It was nice, we all got it together, what a wonderful experience. But it's over with, our, myself, my wife, and my granddaughter. You know, it's like, that was fun. It's nothing to mess around with, I totally respect it. I want to get to the bottom of this. But I think there's a false sense of security among a lot of people in here. Like, the health department is really watching out for us. And the sense that our family experienced, that I hear from a lot of families, and since we're gonna be talking about COVID every meeting, and you guys want to bring it up, and it's your responsibility to bring it up, I think you need to hear from the public, too. Not the people hanging up the phone on you, but what doesn't work? Because clearly, in my family situation, it was about five days before we got a call back from the original test to when we found out that the family had it. Well, then during that discussion, I listened to the phone call, and it was, where have you been? Well, I started feeling sick at church. That was a big event. They said, well, were you at a healthcare or a senior citizen thing? No, I went to church. My wife goes to church, I don't. So, never ask what church you go to. I always thought, boy, you'd thought you would have wanted to know what church you go to so you can contact the church. She did tell her what company she worked for. Never once contacted our work, you know, that an employee of the company.
We recommend they contact their own work unless they ask us to contact them.
Can I make a comment also? I had an experience with exposure, and I tested negative. But the, the contact or the exposures, we stood in Minnesota, just across the border. When they were contacted, they contacted the departments over there in reference to their testing and to find out, you know, who they were to be contacted. They, the health department, Washington County area, indicated, this is Washington, Sagu County, indicated that they don't contact anybody anymore. They can't. They don't have the, if you realize the multiplication factors, that they don't even have the time to call anybody. They said, we tell the people that test positive, hopefully, they'll make some contacts on their own and have those people try to test themselves or get themselves tested. But it's so overwhelming that the, you know, you take 770 or 90...
Oh, yeah, you can't do it.
I mean, you're talking just, if somebody knew it took us 14, 1500 contacts in a day.
And I agree with you, Jay. I just think, that's where I think the narrative coming out, that I think Polk County thinks there's tracers, there's people following up on everybody. That's the false sense of security that, I think, you thought that there was someone there to make sure anyone you contacted knows. And I think we just, one of the things I'm just feeling is in Polk County, we need to be truthful about it, that we're not following up on everybody. And everyone should be safe and be adults, but the county is not able to stop this.
Chris, I would argue with the fact that when early onset, I obviously had it prior to you. I was actually involved in a quarantine of the first, one of the first few contacts contracted in Polk County. So I was under quarantine, and then I was out, and there was plenty of contact.
There was.
To the point that it choked me. So I understand where they've had to go with the volume of cases and all that contact. And quite frankly, there's probably been cases because of some of the misinformation that's out there where people have been reluctant to give all the information that they should because of the misinformation that runs around and how that information travels. So I, they've got their hands full. They've got their hands full in trying to do it right now. But from the onset, the contact was, they called our work. They called, they identified me as having contact. And I argue the fact that my definition of contact and their definition of contact were different things. Didn't matter. I was 14 days in quarantine, and our company had decided we were going to abide by all recommendations. So I was in quarantine for 14 days, did all my homework, and then a month later, I contracted myself, and then I was back in for... Well, I've been through, but my experience is completely different than yours.
Sure. And mine. Supervisor Middleton?
So, to follow up, I think, on this false sense of security theme, and we talked about this today. One of our Health and Human Services member is in the medical field in Cumberland, and Sabrina called in. The other false sense of security, I think, is that we have, that the medical system has our back. And she today urged us absolutely, she was very adamant about the fact that we don't have staffing, we don't have nurses, our doctors are stressed, and we don't have beds. And the Twin Cities are saying the same exact thing. I listened to the press conference today from the public health. And they don't have beds for us. Like, we usually ship from here, we divert to the Twin Cities. They're filling up. So, you know, it's really incumbent on us to be our leaders, wear our masks, wash our hands, keep our distances, and really be careful because it's a false sense of security to think you can go to the emergency room and get coverage. Well, you might be sitting there for, somebody had an amazing number. They were there for 80 hours before they could get air. So it's, it's nothing to mess around with right now.
So, the, also, as mentioned, that there is only two...
Oh, yeah.
So, he also has mentioned that there is only two ICU beds in the whole state of Wisconsin.
That I dispute. I would dispute that because my husband was just in ICU, not for COVID. He's, he has other issues. And he was in St. Craig at the hospital. All the, both ICU beds, the ICU area was empty. He was put into ICU. He just had his gallbladder out. So he, they just put him in the ICU. I have no idea why he went into an ICU room because he wasn't, you know...
But what she was saying today is that if they have no hospital beds and this and that, they said that if, right now, people have heart attacks, car accidents, they got no place to put them because all the rooms are full.
Can't fix what the hospitals are doing wrong.
Right, right, we can't argue about that. We can't do anything about that.
We can't fix that.
My other question. Maybe what we, one of the things that the health department... I know there's, there's, every time you ask a question of the ramifications of COVID, they all vary. The duration of it, that varies. The, but if we had any idea when a person is contagious after potential exposure, how long should they watch out for other people or care for other people by avoiding them, staying away, then quarantining? And after you've had it, another question being, after they've been, like Chris, is Chris contagious today? How do we know he's not? I mean, he didn't get...
Over here, I'll give you a kiss.
I don't care myself. But I know that when people isolate from one another, how long do they have to do this? But if this, if there's no information, and the information that we get, it varies so much that I have no idea what's true or what's not.
So the model that we follow is, once you start getting symptoms or you've had kind of a lingering symptom that's kind of annoying but not taking you down, once that takes a turn for the worse, that's your symptom onset date. There's a two-day look back from that. So that's your contagious period through your quarantine, which is 10 days from your symptom onset. So it's about a 12-day timeline.
What if you still got symptoms after 10 days?
We keep you on quarantine.
You stay on, obviously, but you're still contagious.
Yeah, if you can't control your fever, you're still contagious.
If you don't have a fever?
You have a really bad cough and you're just not feeling right, then you're released from isolation. You could have somewhat of a after-cough. You know, you're just trying to get rid of it. We'll release you for that. But if you're just not feeling yourself and, you know, you can't control the fever or there's, you're not fever-free without medication, you have a cough, you still have a sore throat, you still have body aches, then we're going to keep you on isolation most likely.
What does isolation and release mean? What do you, can you explain that? What do you mean by, "We keep you"?
So isolation is, you're staying at home, not going anywhere, trying to recuperate. When we release you from isolation, then you can go to your county board meeting or back to work or resume normal activities. And you're not contagious.
What do you do with the people that test positive? Say, "He lived alone."
We would not go out to anybody's house who was positive. That would not work.
So the guy isolates, he's sitting there by himself without any assistance. What do these people do?
So some of the questions that are asked, and I don't know if they were asked of either of these gentlemen, I will follow up.
You don't have to follow up. I don't need a follow-up.
The questions that we ask are, "Do you have enough food to be home for 10 days? And if you don't, let's get you connected to a resource so you can have food."
Yeah, we got medications to get, things like that.
Yeah, "Do you have all of that?"
No.
I think the question to me was, "Were you capable of handling all of your essentials?" And my answer was, obviously, yeah, I get, and we can drop stuff off.
My question is, what if somebody can't?
Then it's the, under statute, it's the health department's responsibility.
Okay, that's what I wanted to roll back on here.
We haven't run into that yet, but we've been pulled a few times.
Supervisor Warnedoff?
Question, if somebody's supposed to be isolated and they're out in the public, no consequence?
The consequence is that they would get a call from me and ask why they're not staying in isolation. And if they continue, then we involve law enforcement and have a court order where they have somebody watching to make sure they're not leaving their house.
Have you had to do that?
We usually get to the point of the health officer or the corporation council's office calling them to talk to them, and they go by. We haven't had to have law enforcement quarantine people outside, which would be a burden on the law enforcement. They don't have the capacity to do that.
I appreciate we all staying on this subject. It is the most important issue we have. And I think having a big discussion about this is very important and, you know, and I don't need a follow-back. I'm not beating you up, I'm just talking like I talk. So don't take it as I'm picking on you personally, and I don't need a follow-up whatsoever, Tanya, I promise. I just want to, whenever something goes wrong in my company, the boss always hears about it. And it seems like even if I say everything, "Hey, don't do that again," it still happens. So as the boss, as the boss, I just want you guys to know that our family had a false sense of security. I don't think it, you know, if the model's changing because you guys are overwhelmed and you aren't getting everybody, I think the public needs to understand that, and somehow the newspapers need to print it, what's going on locally about this disease. And we've got to just shake it up a little bit and tell people, "Hey, when you start getting sick, be careful." Because, you know, families, our family was sick. We all live together. Well, it's five days into it, and then the health department says, "Well, can you guys all go in your own rooms?" "Well, we've already lived together, we're all sick together. Now we're supposed to go into our own rooms." It was completely not practical.
Joe, the thing that they have to, people have to start realizing that three months ago is a totally different story than the present because of the fact that we still got to staff, less staff now than we had three months ago. Trying to do three, four, five times more work. And it's, it's impossible, and every health department's having the same problem.
It's going up, it's not going down.
Yeah, and people have to realize that. And you are right when you say that the newspapers should print something like that.
Supervisor Luke?
This is obviously a good conversation for us, of the 11 or 12 of us that seem to get a pretty good message of what's going on in the county. But we're the only one. The, how do we get this, maybe it's our duty, or probably it isn't our duty to get this information out. How are we going to do that? Do we do it by a news release to the county newspapers, the rest of them? They don't seem to come to our meetings anymore or aren't interested. But the, maybe a news release or something from you to the, to the news media with help of Tanya's input and the administrators and that.
Sure, like a press release, like something...
Make a nice press release. And, or we could do it in a motion, you know, I mean, by motion. But I think a good press release from the county, at least that's the only information that local people seem to get.
A lot of people look at that dashboard. A lot of people do look at that dashboard, because I've had many people talk to me about it. How do you, because they don't realize you can enlarge it. So I've showed them how to enlarge it and look at the different boxes and what they need, the definitions.
I can guarantee you, almost guarantee you, that 90% of the county population have never been on our website.
And I can tell you, every single employee that works for my company, there's not one of them that's gone on this website and looked at that information.
Really?
Young men.
Newspapers are the only way we're going to do it.
No, I can't even get my guys to wear masks at work.
And the schools, schools are sending out a lot of information, too, sending home, you know, to all the parents.
Newspapers are the only answer we're going to have.
Superviseur Middleton?
I would just second what Jay was talking about. I think, I think it's a great idea, maybe a press release between Vince and Tanya. I mean, I think Vince, your urgency and tone has been right on point for where we're at right now, I think, and Tanya, you could add to it. I don't really think the public does completely get the urgency of this. And it's a completely, not completely, but it's, it's a preventable disease. If we mask and wash our hands and keep our distances, stay out of groups, et cetera, et cetera. But there's a lot of stuff going on out there that are big groups still. And I think continuing education and the urgency is really good. And if we need a motion tonight, do that.
I don't think we need a motion. We hear it. I think we can work together and we'll get something out. I think that's important.
Get the good message out.
Mention the website, though. People will look at it. I mean, I know a ton of people who look at it, have looked at it. Now, people, you know, my age and maybe 20 years younger, but not, not really young people.
Yeah, I think somehow we need to target that younger population and even all the population, right?
We're on Facebook.
We do put it on Facebook, but you have to follow our page to be able to. And it's on our website, it's on the county website. Want me to finish up or...
It's not exciting for young people to follow the Facebook.
Not until they get it. They don't understand until it happens to them.
Or one of their friends. Laying on a ventilator in Eau Claire.
Sheriff could, they could get attention from the sheriffs.
Now, that's overwhelming.
I think we heard it loud and clear. I think we will do something.
I would just say that if you do experience something that doesn't sit right, please call us right away, and we want to remedy it right away. I guess we want to know if there's a bad experience. We don't want people out there having bad experiences.
I don't think it was a bad experience. It was just an experience that I thought was odd, and I clearly could tell you there was no follow-up. Where I, I think we had a false expectation that, I had a false expectation that someone was following up on everyone that got sick and who you got contacted with.
That's where it started.
And it didn't, it did not go that way whatsoever. They kept tabs on my wife, but that was it.
Okay, well, you're right.
Whatever.
Depends on when we would get the lab and when you got tested. So if you didn't get tested...
A million variables.
Lots of variables. Tracy?
Tanya, are you seeing, when somebody goes in to be tested, that instead of the hospitals contacting them that they are positive, they contact the health department to contact them that they're positive?
The health, or the hospitals should be contacting that person as soon as they receive that lab back. At the same time, the lab is communicating that to the health department through that state database for the required mandatory reporting of that communicable disease. It should be happening at the same time. That's not always happening. This database was never built to handle a pandemic of this proportion. So the system is overloaded, the labs are overloaded, the hospitals are, everybody's overloaded.
Positive or negative?
They all go through that system, and they, now they are filtering out the negatives because we could spend eight hours looking through tests trying to handpick positives.
What can happen is if the hospital calls you and you don't answer your phone, that same message goes to the health department, and they call you and you answer your phone. You get the message from the health department, really, you just didn't make contact with your health provider. That can happen, and it did in one of our three cases in my family. It happened that the health department called them first. I don't know that they did, but that was the first contact.
And can you be positive but have negative tests if you allow the symptoms?
The only false positives are through those rapid tests, and there's not very many being done. The nursing homes have rapid tests, but the ones that I know, the ones that Dana's using are pretty accurate. So there can be a false positive because it's the type of test that they're doing. Most likely, it's a false negative because they're tested too soon. So there's a five-to-seven day wait. Once you've been exposed, they want you testing after that.
Could you give us, too, an update? I heard in Health and Human Services, everyone talks about the age of what it seems like there's death from this disease. What's been the ages of death, and what do we have going on at GAM? Because I hear some comments about GAM, too. You address those two issues?
The five deaths that we have had in the county have been older individuals with multiple underlying health conditions.
What's older to you?
Eighties.
Okay.
Late seventies, early eighties.
Ironically, I got my test.
Are you old, Jay?
Yeah. I think, I hope, I hope you get a little older.
I just made...
It's ironic.
I just wanted to know, am I older or are you old?
You know, this is ironic, it's, I just thought, humorous, that I got my test, and before I got the test results back from, from the hospital, I got $255 check from the social security deposit in my checking account. That's the death benefits, see? So I called social, I called social security today. And I'm trying to find out if I'm alive or not. I said, "So, well, you know..." They, they can't find me with the $255, my check is... What the hell is that?
That's a just-in-case thing. It's a rainy day fund.
So it is, it is, it is that 75, 80-year-olds that are the ones that are, is, have died in our county?
We did have one younger person late sixties.
Late sixties, too. And then what's going on at GAM?
It had some positives.
From staff or from, from?
Both.
Both. But no deaths at GAM?
Yes, there was a death.
There was.
What was that?
At, at Old Age Manor.
Oh.
So what, what are we doing about that vulnerable part? I mean, is that a priority versus a young, healthy guy like me?
It's a priority.
Well, like GAM, obviously, if someone in GAM, I mean, you have limited staff resources, right? You're saying you guys are overwhelmed. Are there areas, you said you prioritized over the weekend, the schools issues? I heard that today. Now, do you take GAM where there's a little more, is there more oversight in a facility like that or other facilities where we know 65, 70, 80-year-old people are there?
Meal sites.
Huh?
Meal sites.
Yeah. I mean, are we prioritizing anything like that? Or do we just treat everything the same?
We work hand-in-hand with the nursing home administrators. So Old Age Manor is Dana, as soon as she, she has a testing protocol that she has to follow for her license. Very strict guidelines on who can enter the building. The staff are jumping, so you just can't walk into their building like you can walk into this building. They're ultra-cautious down there to try to preserve that because of the vulnerability of the older person who is already in a nursing home. And we work with them on the weekends, too. Once they identify positive cases, we follow the protocols and work together on how to manage them. The meal sites, we had one over the weekend that one of their staff tested positive. We jumped on that one right away because people still need their meals delivered to them. So we had to figure out how many staff needed to quarantine so they could still deliver meals, or they had to figure out to buy meals from a restaurant or... Maybe you could speak to them.
Well, in that case, Milltown, yeah, Milltown, they closed it down. Well, then they went to the hospital and asked if they could take and make meals for the home delivery and stuff. And then they brought it to a place, and then people put them together, and then the drivers picked them up and took them out. But other than that, they closed the whole thing down. And then went to the hospital, and the hospital made the food for everybody.
Right.
And that was on the weekend, so the health department was right there.
What do you guys think of this letter that goes out? That it's addressed, you know, and I know it's, it's important to have you guys signing off on it, but that it comes from the county board of supervisors? You know, that it's, it's bigger than just, you know, the health department person or the county administrator, that the county board is speaking as a whole to say, "Hey, guys, let's all..." It might put a little more, and you could put all the county board supervisors' names on it.
And the phone number.
Your phone number.
Mine's fine.
I'm not giving my phone number out anymore.
I think that's a great idea. And in fact, it, it doesn't just have to be limited to this board. It could also include the medical directors that think very regional and sharing and... It can include...
Let's make it big. Let's make it that big, where it's, it's a half-page ad. It could be a big ad to say, "Here's what's going on in Polk County. County board supervisors support." And, you know, it could, I mean, it needs to be a big deal. If, if we, if we, if we're in a big deal issue right now, you're saying we're in a big deal, then we need to address it as a big deal. Then we need to address it as a big deal.
That chart looks like it's going to be a big, bigger deal.
Is everyone comfortable with that kind of? Okay. I know, Amy, you've been chirping that for a long time, so.
Yeah, the, the public official letter concept was, I think, I don't remember if it was Minnesota, but Wisconsin, there was a big push to have public officials in their communities come out and say, wear a mask, do the right procedures. And I don't remember where it was, but it was a while ago. And I think that's a really good idea for us to do that. Keep the public aware and pushing and it's a big deal. They need to hear that. It's a big deal. It's a big deal. It's preventable. Wear your mask, wash your hands, stay out of group, blah, blah, blah.
Tracy, one last comment.
Chris, do you think maybe that it needs to be something so, rather than putting out just a one-time mask notice, do you think maybe this needs to be something done on maybe like every two-week notice, a monthly notice? I mean, until we get our numbers down and get them under control, do you think it's something that needs to be more noticed? I mean, okay, so somebody's going to see this one-time thing, but yet our numbers continue to go up.
Why don't, why don't we, we'll have this on our agenda.
Until further notice.
Let's have this on our agenda next month and let's see what happens in one month. And let's address it month to month. And if we need to put the letter out every month, then we do it.
Maybe we should do it right away as a first one.
Yeah, we can do that next week. Yeah.
Yeah.
I just think it's, it would be more productive to do this because, like I said, they're going to see it one time and they're going to be like, okay, I got this. They're going to do their own thing. Until they keep realizing this is a serious issue, it's, it's, we're going to continue to go up.
Sounds good. All right. We pulled an update. So do you think you're going to be here for an hour?
I thought I had five minutes.
Yeah, right?
Thank you, Tony.
Thanks, Tanya. During the committee of the whole, discussion and deliberation regarding options for modifying public comment procedure for the county board meetings. I'm sure this will go quick. Does anyone need a break first before you go on the committee of the whole? Or are you guys good to keep going?
Keep going, it's getting icy.
All right. So maybe Supervisor Arcan, because it was on executive committee again. We've had it on the committee three months or at least two months, where the executive committee has discussed this multiple times. And it was that committee that wanted to bring it back to here. Supervisor Arcan, do you have any comments since you're the chair of the executive committee?
Um, only, only the fact that, I mean, we changed how we do our meetings. I mean, the, the only way you spell it, give public comment, was to come to this meeting. And we, we changed. I mean, we're, we now allow people to participate by WebEx. They can email, they write comments, telephone now. And so we changed how we conduct our meeting, but we never changed anything else. And I think where we kind of get hung up is in a, in this meeting, we can control and stop comments. And on WebEx and us filming it and it being live, we can't stop. But I mean, it, even the discussion we just had, I mean, probably should have been a point of order and we weren't in committee of the whole, but it went on, but. So either, either we talk about it as a board, how we're going to allow public comment, or we just open it up and let it fly. Because that's what's happening right now is we, we can't control public comment. And we, we did take it back to the executive committee because we had on a resolution with the appointing a vacancy. And it, it was so different that it really didn't belong on that same resolution. I don't, I think the only real conversation we had in executive was to bring it back here, discuss it as a board, and what does the board want to do? I mean, just, we're run by the board, so the majority should, we should decide one way or another.
Yep. And I agree, the, we did ask, or staff did this, right? Or someone asked staff to do it. Vince, could you bring us up? Or Malia, any of you guys want to talk about what got handed out?
I think you all received this. It's kind of a, a survey of counties on whether or not, and we didn't do this. I believe this was done years ago. But the bottom line is, is it shows that it's across the board. If you go through and, and it's not just a yes or no answer, you know, they have different rules, different processes, uh, different philosophies on getting public comment. We can say that, you know, regardless of what we do, somebody else is probably doing it. And if you haven't had a chance to look at these yet, I would recommend you take a look at them and see which ones fit us the best in your minds and make those proposals. And then you can discuss that and decide if that's how you want to do it or not.
The idea was, is that committee of the whole, we're going to want to hear that discussion and then send it back to the executives. So if we have to make any changes.
To the rules of order.
We can then get a resolution put together and bring it back to the board next month. But let's try to get this resolved between now, one more executive meeting, and have it back on the agenda in December to actually get back to what type of public comment we're going to allow, how are we going to allow it? You know, what's the process there? Supervisor Luke?
I've had numerous phone calls in reference to this situation. They've all been pretty much criticizing us for not allowing the public comment. I think we're a victim of the, of the disease that we're dealing with now. And that was part of our problem. I've been here for quite a few years and we never, we never really had a serious problem on the three-minute, uh, the most serious part of that problem was the fact that they were over, they spent more time than they. But so it hasn't been a problem. But now with the COVID, you can't pack the courtroom with some of these issues that are, are here and have 30 minutes of absolute repetition generally on the, on the issue that we've got coming. So I think the combination of the two, or like Russ indicated, if what we're talking about now is variation of, of our, our public comment. I don't think we can tell them what they can't talk about. We can certainly, we've never had any problem with language before. When they're up here in front of a crowd, I mean, there's a little bit of, of, you know, rough language. But, I mean, that's, that's pretty much acceptable in our government, federal government. But the, uh, the idea that, that we look these things over and come up with something now, it's going to have to be a combination of, of that. I, I don't mind having somebody come in as an individual, mask, stand up, and give a public comment for 30 minutes and walk out. And then another one come in and manage to some degree. I think that's going to have to be part of it. But if they do have an option, email, whatever, they may prefer to utilize that. So it'll have to be, we're going to have to figure out how to control the, the time element. I think it'll be a major problem. But a combination of the two and something given some more thought, I think is a pretty good idea to try to figure it out.
Yeah, because we never had taken, prior to this, we'd never taken public comment in writing or what you're saying in video, but phone calls. We've always had public comment done in the room. We had a, Doug, Supervisor Ravi?
Well, I'm a big proponent of public, of the comments. And what happened in the town of Bone Lake was a new, or a chairman was elected. And they cut off public comments, period. And we did it for two years. And people are still stewing about it. And I just think we have to listen to the citizens, both what they've been saying about what's done now. And we always should be listening to them. They are Polk County.
And do you guys get public comment in your environmental services committee, though?
What's that?
You guys, you guys have public comment in, on your committees you sit on, right?
I do.
Yeah, so.
But you know, the other day, they did it from upstairs.
Sure.
And the room was full.
Sure.
So we had all kinds of public comment. So why can't that be done? I mean, that's one option that, you know.
It could be.
Just the same as before. They're either standing here or right there.
Right.
Or upstairs. Or we could have one at a time. And then I'd be fine with that.
Then you could control it. Then you could control with having staff sitting there. You know, there was a question and I, this, I'm not going to get into debate of it, but Supervisor Middleton, Supervisor Middleton had asked about checking with IT, too. We talked about a little delay. And I did bring that up with IT and they just says they do not have the capability of muting or, or they can mute you, but they.
Time delay.
They could do a time delay or a pause button. So I did bring that up. Supervisor Pritchard would like to comment, right?
Uh, can you hear me all right now?
Yes, I guess we can.
Okay, I, I'm having a little trouble with the computer, but, uh, and I'm generally for giving the public ample access to make their comments. I don't know how burdensome it is to, uh, to Lisa and the county clerk's office. They've done a yeoman job of getting out emailed comments that come into their office and circulating them. One thought that I, I would add, however we come out on it, I think it would be well to have a register of people who are making public comments. And very often there, when we were having the three-minute presentat, oral presentations in the county board room, someone would get up and they'd say, I'm John Doe from Bone Lake Township or whatever. And, uh, that wouldn't particularly register. Maybe they'd be from outside the county for that matter. But I think it'd be well to keep a record of who does speak to us. And I, I guess now our county board meetings are being recorded so that there is a record of what, who, who's out there. But I don't know that we have actual names and addresses of people other than what they say very briefly. And I, I just, I would add that, that a requirement.
Lisa, are you actually writing down some of these notes that people are saying?
No, yep.
You are, okay. So then we'll, okay. Supervisor Olson, you would like to make a comment? Supervisor Olson, are you, can you hear us? He, um, he should be there, right? We'll come back to you, Brad. Who else had a question? Joe?
Our, I did not hear the thing about us going into a motion to go into.
Late to be bringing that up now.
Well, I tried to say it earlier, but then.
To go into, uh, committee of the whole?
Yeah.
All right. Is there a motion going to committee of the whole? So we got it from Joe and from Jay. All in favor? Julie, you can just stand up and throw something at me if you need my attention.
My bow.
Jay? Surprised that slipped by you, Supervisor O'Connell?
I told him.
So what's the conclusion on?
So we got that comment, Supervisor Middleton?
So, um, I'm with, with Doug on this, that public comment is very near and dear in my mind. I think that we might have comments at committee, but those committees are at nine or 10 o'clock in the day. People aren't working or they can't get there. It might also be that there's a component to an issue that the committee didn't satisfy, so they're coming to the poll board for a discussion. So, you know, I think that's an important panel or a pathway that we provide. I really like public. I mean, I want to see them, and, and obviously we can't right now, but I like them in person, on WebEx. I can see their body language. I can see their expressions. And I think that's an important pathway. We should be listening. We should be learning. We should be hearing what they're having to say. And I don't think we should be shutting that down in any manner. I don't condone bad language, obviously. And, but I don't think, I'm with Jay, I don't think we really have a problem. The three issues that have been cited that have gotten us to this point to sort of back up why we're here are really, I think, come out of frustration and lack of transparency and the fact that the public is bringing some issues before us and we're, and we're not responding. And so that's what happens. If people get frustrated and that's where we're at. The, the other piece is, I think we shouldn't be shooting the messenger on some of this, on the quote piece. So, you know, I don't think we should completely shut down public comment because we don't really want to hear what, what's going on. It's, it's all uncomfortable and, and I agree, it's, it's not fun to, to listen to. But I think the 51 comments that we got, yeah, 51 comments that we got last month is our answer. People came out amazingly happy to say, and then our phones. I mean, my phone rang a couple of times, I got emails. People do not want public comment to stop. And I think even stopping public comment without a discussion and a changing of rules, the rules of order is an overreach. You know, we stopped it because Chris said we're not doing public comment anymore, but we didn't get to make that decision. It didn't come as a resolution. It was just sort of this thing. And the only time in our rules of order that I can figure out that we can do that is if there's an emergency. So like with COVID, yes, public comment needs to change. We need to adjust. There's an emergency. But the, the foul language isn't really an emergency for us to be really being denied access to hearing public comments. For now, we're on meeting two, I think. And if it doesn't go to the next time, you know, it's meeting three. So I really think it's important that it's not an emergency. Public comment needs to come back until we really look at the rules of order because this isn't allowed in the rules of order. And so we're, we're overstepping what we should be doing right now. And public comment should be back on the agenda next month until we figure this out. And I think.
Thank you.
I think the public's heard from us.
I got a, a thing, too, is along with Jay, you know, ever since I've been on here, we've always had public comment. We had the pedestal up there. We had a pedestal over here. And this is virtually the first time I've ever heard anybody like her saying that stuff. But you've got to look at all the years that this has been going on in one instance. And it changed everything, which it's, it's wrong. I agree with that, but you could, my computer was just loaded with messages and that was the number one thing, is they want public comment back. They said that you guys work for us, we elected you, so take care of it, you know? And what do you do, you know? You just, you got to make the comments to the whole board, you know, of what's your constituents.
And I think I'd like to address this a little bit. It's that I don't think anyone says we don't want public comment. You know, and, and when I said, hey, we're, we're going to be done, I warned them. We had the WebEx issue with, uh, the president of one of our, and I'm not going to use names tonight, but we all know who he was, said the F-word a couple of times. And that was a WebEx issue. But clearly, here's someone sitting at home who can swear and doesn't like what we're talking about. Whether they're frustrated or not, I've been frustrated with Polk County for 25 years. Trust me, I was a guy that loved public comment. I got, the reason I ran for county board is because Dean Johansson wouldn't let me talk in the environmental services committee and not make public comment once. That's what drove me to run for the county board. So trust me, I'm a, I'm a supporter of public comment. I'm not a supporter of then, when a, especially when they identify themselves as a minister or a pastor. And I think of going home and telling to my children, hey, guess what I heard at work today? This guy said. This guy said, F you, F this. And I'm saying the same word she did. F word, F word, F word, F word. But if I went home and told my children the exact same quote on the construction site today, trust me, my wife would backhand me. It's not an appropriate place to say the F word, just like the board isn't. I don't care if they're frustrated, lack of transparency. Everyone can use whatever crutch they want to say, oh, I'm so frustrated because you didn't vote the way I wanted your board to vote, so I'm going to swear. For that wasn't even on the agenda. When the pastor said the F word multiple times that night, that was a political issue. That had nothing to do with our agenda. And then we had the next gentleman, when I warned him the following meeting, to say, keep it clean, guys. Keep it clean. And no, he had to throw that last zinger out there. And guess what? I am not offended by any of it. Because I, I, I'm not offended by any of that language. I hear it all day long. But not here. So I agree with Russ is things have changed. I don't want to stop public comment, but how do we control people getting? If they're frustrated, that's their, that's going to be their crutch to say, oh, I don't like what you guys are doing, so I'm going to go over the top. That's what we got to stop. And, and when you read this um, from these other counties, some counties say, you want to make public comment, you have a supervisor, sponsor your public comment. So, you know, if you got public comment, you have supervisors, say, yeah. You contact your supervisor, your supervisor sponsor you to make public comment. That's one way to do it. The register is another way to do it. Um, I think there's a lot of options there. I haven't heard too many people on this county board. That's why I don't want to generalize this by a couple of supervisors saying we don't want public comment. I want public comment. I just want to have a little decorum and the people that are the activists of our community that get so frustrated that they're going to spout out and try to like elevate the issue. That's what we got to stop.
I think Chris, too, a lot of it had to do with being there up there because we had a lot of problems with people that get excited when they were talking down here to the whole county board. But I think it was better controlled because they were here. We can't do nothing to them up there. But down here, we can. Because you're looking right at them and say, you know, like this, where.
Are you proposing, we put on this list, we've heard one thing from Russ to register, are you proposing that the executives should look at putting public comment back in this room one at a time? Are you wanting them to?
I would say do it the way it is right now, WebEx, until we get this COVID thing done. But when that's done, public comment should be right back in here.
For WebEx, so they can do it from the computer, they can do it from their cell phone, or they can do it from the.
Right.
So any, anything, so how do we deal with the swearing?
Okay. He said he can't delay things, but he can mute it. Right? Whenever something like that happens, just hit that button. You might see their facial moves and stuff, but you won't hear them.
You get one F, you get one F word out. We could have stopped the pastor off for first F word.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I do like the fact that we get that in written format because we can understand who it is and where they're from and be able to go back and review what they said. I think there's value to that. And I think the register effect by having them be able to submit written and understand what point they have. And then whether it be sponsored or whether it be accepted as public comment, to let them come in and speak or speak upstairs. It allows us to qualify where they're going or a supervisor to qualify where they're going. And allow them to have, I think the public comment thing is critical. But I think to have some background to understand that that's actually the person we're talking to. And they're actually a county resident and they're actually on an issue that we're talking about. I think is critical to having successful public comment.
Hard to control that, though, because like.
It's not perfect.
No, but the thing is, is she asked if she could read that word by word.
She asked that, too?
You?
No, she didn't ask my permission. I don't have no way to control what she, she didn't ask.
I thought I heard her say that, is it okay if I read this word to word?
No, that's totally wrong. She never asked me. I had no idea what she was talking about.
Okay, banning her from public comment next time don't mean that she's going to have the same comment in the same language.
But if she's done it once, why would you, if someone's, if someone lets the F word fling at a public meeting, I can guarantee you, there's nothing that tells me she won't do it again. Maybe she won't because she's been talked about now and she's the one that kind of caused this controversy.
I call the board member hypocrite.
Yeah.
I had to apologize. It's pretty simple fact that he didn't have his resolution the way it should have been.
Yeah, well, you're not a public comment. You're an elected official, so they can get rid of you if they don't like what you say.
Do it now.
Supervisor Warnold.
Do it now.
It would seem that we can't control the, the WebEx. Somebody from their home can say anything and we can't control it. But if we have them upstairs, we have a monitor up there that can be there to, correct me if I'm wrong, mute the mic. If somebody's there in a portal, mute the mic, right? At least their conversation would end at that point and they would be excused. The next person would come up.
Fuck, the words already.
Yeah, but I mean, at least they're done.
Do they sign in when they?
Well, hold on.
Do they sign in when they come to the West Conference Room?
We have any, we've never, I don't think, the only time we've ever done sign in is like. Huh?
Public hearings, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't never done a sign in or registry or. Supervisor Luke?
You're going to edit? Add language? I was in the Navy and nothing bothers me anymore, but the fact remains, what? We can have a list of words that they can't use or. What's offensive? Someone else. I uh,
Right.
To me, I was in the Navy and nothing is, nothing. If we eliminated those words, we wouldn't have the language.
Supervisor Arcan?
So certainly just let it go. Let them do WebEx. Let them come in here. Let them call in. Let them do whatever they want. And let the public. I mean, if they, let them swear. Let them say whatever they want, do whatever they want. Let the watching or tuning in. Let them, their kids, the band, or mute their thing. Maybe we should just let it go. Let it go and let the.
I can tell you right now, Supervisor Arcan, if you want to let it go, then you need to chair during public comment. Yeah. I'm not going to chair public comment. I will turn that over to Vice or Jay. Maybe Jay can do public comments. And because for me as the chair, if I got to conduct a meeting and I got to allow public comment like that, that is not fair to put me in that position to decide, we all know the F word is wrong. Right? We all know you don't say that.
In this.
In this setting. This is a professional setting. We should keep it professional. So you know, again, I am not here to limit public comment, but I think Supervisor Warn, Warnold made a good point is that a committee should consider, and I've heard it from Mr. Rook and from Russ and from a few of you guys, is that you know, maybe executive, if and, you know, we can do it however we want. I, I don't know if it's rules of order we have to change, then I don't know that we can get it done before next board meeting, or we'd have to have some kind of special meeting to pull that off. But if we're going to change and I, maybe Malia needs to weigh in on this. Malia, do you have any comments legally, what we're all talking about and and get us back on track here and what we can do, can't do?
Sure. Statutorily to have public comment. I'm really going to be a.
We're losing half of what you're saying.
Really? I'm, I'm going to shut off my camera and see if that helps.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
I'm really.
I'm sorry.
Keep talking, maybe we'll hear.
My apologies. I, I'm on a hotspot. I don't have regular internet at my new home yet, so.
Sure, you're just fine right now.
Okay. Um, so you're not required statutorily to have public comment, but you're allowed to do so. It says that you may. Our current rules of order indicate that it shall generally be allowed. Um, but of course, then there's that discretion given to the chair. So the discussion about limiting public comment to written or other formats, I think is, is an appropriate discussion to have. It clearly, there's some limitations with technology um, that im- impacts the ability to, to control public comment. Uh, but if you're going to change the rules of order, it would take a two-thirds majority of the county board to do that. And so I would definitely suggest the chair's idea about sending this back to executive so that you can come up with options. Uh, you know, A, B, and C for the full board to then consider. And I would also note that I believe Supervisor Dunkinson wanted to speak. Um, but was having a hard time getting your attention if you wanted to um, recognize her.
Yeah, I, I have a note, so she was going to be next. Does anyone have any questions for Malia while we have her? Because I heard one supervisor say that chair did not have discretion. You're saying I do have discretion.
Well, there's of course always an argument to be made. The current rules of order say it shall generally be allowed. Um, it can be limited u- under certain emergency circumstances. Um, but again, it, it doesn't define it. So I if someone were to ask me, I would say that the chair has discretion to determine the nature um, of obtaining and, and circulating the public comment, especially given that we're right in the middle of this COVID pandemic. Even the idea of bringing individuals into that West Conference Room, you're still walking them through the building. You're still having them press the buttons to go up the elevator or, or go up the stairs. You're putting them in a room together, having them stand at the same table. Um, all of those things make it difficult.
Okay. Supervisor Dunkinson? You have a comment?
Yes, thank you. Um, well, and I don't, of course, swear. Uh, like, any time we got. Three-minute limit of public comment. Are you getting that comment? For the people who are not, I would propose to submit their comments in writing via email or, or in writing and that we are, uh, get those comments to review prior to a meeting.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Dunkinson. So we've had proposals of Dunkinson, Jay, Mike Pritchard. Is there anything that we should add to the executive committee's agenda to consider? Also, there's been the, just to keep doing it the way we're doing it. Supervisor Rowdy?
I don't, we can't do what we were doing. But what, I was listening to Steve Warnold, Supervisor, and he said, though, it used to be that anybody that wanted to be here for public comment had to come here.
Yeah.
So I don't see why they can't be upstairs. Like the other day, when I'm busy, you're watching the person, they can shut them off. Or you can, you know, can check upon the room. That's just why I, I like what I like to say.
I do think after the earlier discussion we had, certainly I'm okay with that, but it's almost like right now, we're in this urgent mode of, I want to keep people away from the building.
Then they won't have public comments at committee meeting either.
Well, we could on WebEx.
So you're not, so are you saying that committees should not be having public comments?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying, if we're saying the only way you can have a public comment is to come into this building and to the West Conference Room, we should consider that we're inviting a lot of people.
That's not what I heard, touch administrator. I heard
Okay.
that also written, Rand Dunkinson said, public comment can be the way we've been receiving them. And then the clerk is telling us who it is and what they want to make a point out. The only problem we have with that is Supervisor Middleton wants to see the body language and the person talking. Right?
The thing, I mean, I, I'm, if it wasn't for COVID, I'm totally down with people coming here. I, I agree with Malia saying if we are only requiring people to go to the West, they're walking through the building and I don't think everyone is comfortable doing that. And I think it, it cuts off some public input that someone might be willing to talk to us on WebEx, but they wouldn't be willing to walk through.
You think that people on WebEx would not be willing to write us a letter like we got tonight?
Yeah, I'd like to see them on WebEx. That's my, that's my point. And then the other piece that we could add to. Wait, just let me just say that the upstairs piece, if we have people come in, the other thing we can tell people is that they need to leave right away. So there's not, I suppose people are in the queue, but there's been times when people stayed and, and maybe with pandemic now, those, that needs to do your comment and you leave. And you have to be in the queue maybe a little bit, but just to get people moving on, back out of the building.
Okay. Supervisor Arcan?
I don't, I don't, I think we can get them on WebEx. I think we can see their body language. I think they can give their comments. Why can't that be done prior to the meeting? Where the public comment could be screened. So if there is any swearing, any snide things thrown in at the end, those would be out and the rest of them would be shown.
We talked about that with the IT and.
Talking prior to the meeting, these would be, yeah, videotaped.
Well, we talked about that. Now, Malia, would you comment on that, please?
Well, you've done it in the past when you've had folks come in and be videotaped. If you're talking about people videotaping themselves and emailing them in and having, that would be a lot of work for staff to go through. First of all, making sure each one was under three minutes and then editing it for inappropriate contact, uh, content. But I don't think there would be anything standing in the way of soliciting any type of comment, whether, I mean, any, any constituent could videotape themselves right now and email um, all supervisors, own video of their comments on any particular topic. There's nothing limiting the, the way a constituent can speak to and reach any county board supervisor. You're just talking about then making it a part of the official record that is either viewed or maintained as a part of the county board meeting. So I think the logistics of that would probably be the more difficult thing.
And Mr. Chair, if I can add in regards to IT, there is a fairly large logistical thing there with recording the video, then editing it, and by editing it, I mean, putting it into a, a format where they're all combined. But the other thing is, you're talking about bringing in people from the outside into a room with at least one staff member. And they record in close proximity, in close proximity in that room. Then they leave, then we have to sanitize the room for the next person. And, and I will just say, from the human resources standpoint, we're trying to limit you know, the exposure that employees have so that we don't wind up with a sick workforce.
I wasn't talking them coming to the building at all. Only like, like right now, we're taking written public comment. Why couldn't we take a video of a comment?
From an individual.
Absolutely, from an individual. No different than the written.
Could that be done right now? I mean, it, no one's ever done it. Is that in our rules of order? Can we accept the video?
They, they can video and send it as an attachment on an email. No difference than they can a letter. Simple to do. Do it all the time with equipment.
Sure. For me.
Well, but if, if somebody would want to do that, there's a process to videotape yourself, attach that to an email and send it in like we're getting public comment for everybody. And that could come to every one of us and we could review it and look at it and be prepared for whatever discussion we wanted. And then that would be only during the pandemic. Upon completion of the pandemic, we go back to business as usual. That way it would allow public comment, allow to see the body language, allow to see that in the form of an email that we get currently like we get the letters today.
And I, and I don't think, I mean, my personal opinion is if you get a letter full of F words for the clerk, I'm not going to ask the clerk to white out the F words and still submit the written comment. and still submit the written comment. If the pastor wanted to write all those F-words on her, you know, written, I mean, her, she put in public comment this week. We accepted her public comment. I said I wasn't going to accept public comment from her anymore. We accepted it. She didn't swear in it. She had good valid points. It was sent to everybody. Did a good job. You know, and I hope this is send a warning shot to the rest of the people out there that they just can't do that anymore. And maybe we can get right back to normal. But I think we've got some good information for executive. I will certainly take your point on that you think we should go right back into public comment next month. You know, if there's something controversial, maybe we, I will consider it. If it's my discretion, I'm going to wait until executive committee makes recommendations. I would urge all supervisors to attend the executive meeting. And if you want to put more input in and be part of the discussion, I'm sure the chair of executive committee will allow any supervisor to be part of that discussion at our next meeting. And we will make recommendations to the board next month. Joe.
I think this should be settled here. My feelings, not to discredit anybody, but I have zero faith in the executive committee. My opinion.
Okay, that's nice to know.
This is a point of order.
Thanks, Joe.
We can't settle it here. There's no resolution. We're in committee of the whole. We're only having a discussion on it. And executive will either send a resolution to county board or it'll just be dropped.
Can we do, could we do a resolution? Well, one month is not probably going to be the end of the world. People are still going to be able to send us, one more month of public comment. Having a little bit of restraint is not going to end Polk County's.
Hello, just a comment. I think when you, maybe you could imply, just writing now, keeping people out of this building as much as, as we can, except for the, at real necessity.
Right.
Here, we're going to come up with a, a press release, so to speak, about the COVID. And one of the things I'm sure we're going to be discussing in the press release is eliminate the congregations. Now, on the other hand, we're inviting people here to congregate. So maybe make a mention in the press release that that public comment has been discussed and is probably going to be suspended with exception of writing until the COVID can be controlled in this county. And not to, so we don't.
That's a new idea.
Don't hurt our efforts to try to control the most important thing that we're dealing with right now.
Okay, Supervisor.
Kelly.
Kelly, yeah. Sharon Kelly, right?
Grace.
Grace.
I wouldn't use the word suspended because then somebody's going to write a letter to the editor that we're suspending it again. I would say, public comment will be accepted in a written form due to this COVID pandemic. Yep. I would put it, I just wouldn't use that word suspend because right away, you're going to get people's fucking comments about that.
We're going to have COVID around for an awful long time.
Well.
Right?
Hopefully not.
Sure. And COVID ain't going away next year.
Nope.
So we're going to be dealing with this for a year or two.
Well.
Sure, all right. We have one Supervisor Pritchard wanted to make another comment. Mike?
Uh, no, I'm fine. Thank you.
All right, all right. So I think we've heard a lot of comments here. I think we can do what this said executive. Sorry, Joe.
Make a motion, we'll get out of the committee.
Can Joe make a motion to get out of the committee of the whole?
I sure will.
Do we have a second?
I will.
Jay, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so now what do we got? We convene general government. Can we just skip the budget pins? We'll hold on that till next month?
No, we gotta do it today.
Do we need a break?
Yes.
All right, let's take a 10-minute recess. Tell them your 2021, and to set the 2021 tax levy. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Jay, motion? Second, Warndall. All in favor?
Aye.
So. Discussion. I guess we all said aye to the.
Yeah, I don't think you're supposed to vote.
Okay, I wasn't supposed to ask for a vote, guys. Sorry, kind of trying to speed it up. So Vince is going to give us a little.
Well, I put up on the page, since the resolution deals with the levy and so on, and that levy, as you recall, we set at about $400,000 less than what we're allowed to do because we had a good year in terms of equalized value and assessment and new construction. All those things helped us. Plus, we limited our budget. We were disciplined in how we approached it. The budget has been sent out to you all before. We've seen it. We've discussed it at the committees. And so the next page there is what we put together. And I think this is something that's been done in the past, where we get a lot of outside requests or requests from staff, and we take a look at it, and, you know, it's that old thing of a million things are worthy, right? But we can't do everything. So we, we kind of limited what we did, but we call this funding request policy for the board. And so we presented this to the committees. And if you look at your copy, you'll see the first one, for example, forestry. Create a line item for forest road repair. And it creates an account for ongoing forest road repairs. What I did, rather than approve that as a recurring expense, because sometimes when you create a new line item like this, it builds up, builds up, builds up, and then they say, well, we didn't use it for road repair this year, so we're going to take that money and spend it over here. So I'm just saying, let's try it for a year. Let's see what can happen. I like the idea of having road repair and forestry because it relates to our parks and trails commitment. If we can use our county forests more often for ATV or UTV riding, or if we can do cross-country skiing, whatever it is, I like that idea. I just suggested we didn't approve it.
So quick question, Administrator. How do we know as a board that you, just because you said it, where do we see that you said it, because right there it says it's recurring?
Okay, on the next page, Mr. Nelson, we talked about the things that have been approved. And I believe the forest 31 is.
Second from the bottom.
Second from the bottom.
All right, so are we going to go just one by one through the things? Or how do we do it the easiest?
What I would recommend is, take a look at this front page. These are the things, and you'll see what the committees are recommending. If any of you would propose anything different or question them, now's the time to do it because a committee has already vetted these and made a decision. But if it's not in your committee, if you want to question it, now's the time to do it.
Good. Is everyone comfortable doing it this way? Are you comfortable, Doug, doing it this way, where you're just going to look at it? Or should we just, would it be quick?
I have a question right now.
How about if we go through each one, one by one, real quick?
Okay. So I just talked about the forestry.
Well, you'll go through it.
Yeah, let's just go through it, and then when your question pops up, ask it.
Okay. Forestry. So Environmental Service recommended it remain for one year on a trial basis. Look at it again next year. We'll make a decision then what to do.
Yes.
Well, I'd make a motion that we add that to the budget on a one-year trial basis.
Is that already in the budget, you're saying?
No, we're, it wasn't, well, the one year is. I'm sorry, the one year is. It's on the next page.
Already in the budget, just not, you're advocating it's not doing as recurring.
Right.
Make a motion, that'd be for one year.
Okay, well, it's already in the budget for one year.
So we don't have to do anything.
Why are we bringing it up?
Motion required.
Because if you said, I think we should do it every year, you could make that recommendation.
All right, next one?
District Attorney, this was an ad of a Point 4 FTE where he asked for an assistant to help in case investigations. We are adding FTEs to law enforcement. We did not add this to the district attorney's office. Part of it was because his request came at the very last minute, and there wasn't much of a thought put into it. So we didn't like the fact that we don't know if it's been thought through enough. And so we said, we're adding to the law enforcement in other areas. We did not add a Point 4 FTE in this.
So you didn't put that in the budget?
It's not in the budget. But again, if you all said, hey, we really need that, then you could make that amendment.
All right, Register of Deeds?
Register of Deeds purchased a new ScanPro system. This deals, we talked about this committee deals with. Fish, initially, I did not put it in there. We had done some other things with the Register of Deeds. But Environmental Services did recommend this, and that General Government had no recommendation.
So it's in the budget. Supervisor Rowdy?
I think Tim can help me out. I haven't missed an Environmental Services meeting, and I remember talking about some of these things.
Yeah, we did. We talked through these because we talked about that they had fish. I remember having a conversation. Yeah, it was.
The schoolhouse, we never discussed that.
No, the schoolhouse was not.
We did discuss this, though.
That's what we discussed. You know, just like.
Okay, but we'll get to that. Let's just say Register of Deeds.
All of these didn't necessarily get discussed in every committee.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so every committee may have, you know, looked at the ones that applied to them. And sometimes it was a discussion, sometimes they said, ah, it looks good, and they left.
Can I make a recommendation that we go with the ScanPro software?
Vince, did you already put it in there?
Did you put it in there?
Actually, it is not in there yet because this is where we're giving you that option. And there was no recommendation of government, but recommended by Environmental Services. So yes, you can make that recommendation.
I mean, I don't know if any of you know.
Just make it.
Make it. I made the motion that we add that to the budget.
There's a second. O'Connell seconded. Now there can be discussion. Supervisor Row.
My only concern with it is I don't think we've seen the roughest waters as it comes to the COVID pandemic. And I think we need to be very cautious of any additional spending right now until we see how bad this truly gets. And I understand that will improve their efficiency, and there is some value to it. But just on financial responsibility, I'm scared to spend anything extra right now until we know.
Well, we're going to get, we're getting reimbursed from the feds for a lot of that from the CARES Act.
And other departments.
Yeah.
Okay, Supervisor Boo.
It seemed to me that we've been hashing this equipment problem for some time with these people. I mean, we've been putting them off for several years now.
Well, there's no replacement parts or anything for what they have.
Supervisor Arcan?
I would just comment that Environmental Services looked at this, recommended it. That's five of the 15 supervisors. They went to General Government. Another five took a look at it. No recommendation. So there's really only five that are, haven't got to weigh in on it yet. And everyone else is pretty sure where they're at. And I just, we can hash it over all night. Either in favor.
You have a call to question?
Absolutely.
Well, the question's been called. We're going to vote on whether to allow $10,000 to be put in the budget. And I guess we'll just see how the vote, it's just. A would, yes, to vote in affirmative, we're going to put $10,000. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion carries. $10,000 will be put in the budget. Next one is facilities?
Facilities, and I'll put these next two together. Or no, I'm sorry, facilities, replacement of AEDs, these are defibrillators. Look, this is something that everybody wants defibrillators, right? We have them. They work. They're not, when they say outdated, it's just not the most current version or model, and they're still functioning. The question is, do we want to replace them now at the time we said, let's wait? We can do this next year or the following year.
Well, that's not in the budget.
No, none of these are.
Okay. Anyone have a comment on that?
He said they work, though.
Yeah.
I got my own carry a little.
Facilities?
Okay, the next one. Actually, the next two, it's really kind of in the courtrooms. It's to replace existing lighting in courtroom with LED lighting, $45,000. The next one, install audio and video in courtroom three, $75,000. Yes, there is value in doing that. The reason we held off at this point was, we said, that building in the courthouse is scheduled for some renovation and some upgrades and upkeep and maintenance. And we thought, does it make sense to do this all at once? Might there be some efficiencies in that? Can we function now without it? Could we do it now? Yeah, you could do it now. It would improve those courtrooms now. So that's why we put it in here, you know, for you to decide.
Supervisor Middleton?
I like the efficiency concept, but I'm wondering if the audio and video, is that a COVID-driven thing? Would that help them be able to continue with court virtually?
I think it does help somewhat. Now, right now, that third courtroom is kind of, is not used to the same extent one and two. We only have two judges, but sometimes we have a third. We wanted to use that third courtroom for other types of activities. So yes, would there be some benefit to having this stuff installed now? Yes. So that's one of those, we could have gone either way.
Supervisor Duncanson has a comment?
I didn't have a comment on this item.
Oh, what, you did not?
I did not.
All right. Do you have anything coming up so I don't miss you on, I know you probably commented on the museum.
Um, yeah, and the UW extension, I have heard from them and learned more about what they do. So I would like to comment when we get to that.
Okay, sounds good. All right, anything more on the facility? Mike, you have any comments? How about Supervisor Olson? Do you have any comments? All right, so we're still on facilities. Amy, you get your question to answer?
Any decision on these?
So you've left them out for now.
Can I add, Mr. Administrator, can I add one thing regarding the courtroom video and audio?
Go ahead.
We are purchasing video carts through grant funds that we received for the Justice Center that will allow us to use courtroom three with video and audio. We could, that is an alternative to put in this system and just so you know everything that's available.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any motions to add anything or change anything, so then. Museum?
Museum, repaint the exterior, repairs the old schoolhouse, the one down in Balsam Lake. That was a bid that was given out. The thought being, does it need it this year? Maybe. And I thought with a new administrator and a fundraiser, a new county, you know, director, that seemed to me like something they could get volunteers to paint that. So we just said, let's wait.
Sounds good. Any other questions on that? It's not in the budget.
Not in the budget.
The museum issue, the next one?
Okay, that's been mentioned earlier. They came to us requesting, basically it ended up, they want us to fund half of the salary for the new director. They made a great case of what that new director can do for them in terms of marketing, budgeting, fundraising, recruiting volunteers. First time they've ever requested this thing from us. They came in at, you know, kind of at the last minute. They have a new board who I think are very good and very progressive and very aggressive. And my feeling was $10,000 as seed money to say, rather than me take your word. "Rather than me take your word that you're going to do wonderful things, show us what you can do with $10,000," which I think is generous. They could take that money, do marketing, do recruiting of volunteers, doing work. Then, we could assess with this new board, are they walking like they're talking? And then make a clear decision, is this something we want to fund on an annual basis at $25,000? The committee and General Government said, "No, we like the museum. We want to recommend the $25,000."
Recurring, recurring. So, Supervisor Arcan?
Motion to amend the budget to allow the $25,000 reoccurring after a MOU is in place.
Yeah, that was part of the, it was part of the recommendation from General Government, that an MOU has to be in place before they got the funding. Supervisor Ruck, you talked about that. Do you want to make a motion right now? What's that?
I guess I don't probably want to make a motion. I wasn't in the General Government meeting at that time, didn't hear the discussions. I don't know if I'm qualified to do that.
Actually, just a.
You made a motion to add that. Oh, okay, so you're looking for a second. Well, you voted against this. I'm just surprised Supervisor Arcan.
We got to get it to the floor.
Okay, do we have a second on Russ's motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Jay. Discussion about Russ's amendment to this.
I couldn't quite hear what Russ, could you repeat that?
Supervisor Arcan?
The motion was to amend the budget to recommend the $25,000 reoccurring after an MOU was in place.
That was a recommendation from General Government, and it was a three-to-one vote.
I like the MOU idea. Professional sense.
And I will throw this out since we're dealing with the budget. There was a comment about that is that, you know, that maybe instead of doing reoccurring right from the start, and I have no problem doing this because I have full faith in this group, and I think with putting.
Supervisor Kelly?
Supervisor Kelly? Need even another shot of pop. Supervisor Kelly is going to be our liaison. I have no problem accepting a motion. I don't think I should be the one to do it to say, "Let's do it a one year like the Administrator suggested on the 10, and then let them come back next year, and let's see them prove that, hey, they're..." Because if we say $25,000 now, we're there. So, I just want to throw that out there that there was a discussion about that. And even though Supervisor Ruck was not at our meeting, I still think it's appropriate for you to make a motion like that if you still want to do that.
I would make the motion that the $25,000 be approved for 2021 after the MOU. And then, we'll review it after that, after 21, to see if that's a recurring.
Can we make an amendment to the motion, Russ, like this? Okay, do we have a second? Second, Mr. Rowdy. Any discussion about that issue, that it's not recurring, it's just one year, and then we'll review it at next budget season again?
$25,000 or $10,000?
$25,000 for the museum. Just have to pay for a director. And I do know they've already hired the director. So, they made the decision to go out and do it. They're not waiting for our funding. They are going to do it. Sure, Supervisor Duncan.
I thought we were kind of going back to the idea of trying to save some of the money in case this COVID thing hits us in the hangden.
Sure.
Well, I would like to see it. I mean, all the motions made, but I'd like to see it at the $10,000.
Well, let's, we'll go back after this motion's voted on. Supervisor Kelly, you got another comment?
Well, I think it's, I agree with the $25,000 for one year review.
Do you want to call that question, then? How about all in favor of the current motion on the floor?
Of the amendment?
Of the amendment by saying aye?
Aye.
Against the amendment? Goes against that, okay. So, now, the original motion was for the $25,000 and having an MOU in place. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
And carried.
Okay, UW Extension, I think this is the one where Ms. Dunkinson would like to comment. This was, we were in the budget funding UW Extension. It was a recommendation in General Government Committee which would not fund the .25 horticulturist, who is a master gardener responsible for training people on master gardening techniques and so on. This person does work with various organizations like Endeavors, with Unity School District, with Clearlake Group. Clearlake, I know, and throughout the county, they work training people on gardening to become masked certified as a master gardener, that type of thing. They do work on grants and some other things, but, so that, there's more to it than that. But, the recommendation of the General Government Committee was to eliminate that one quarter FTE, which would be a savings of just under $10,600.
And I would just follow up. I think the comments were, is this a core function of government? That we supply a master gardener? So, that's, it was kind of like, you know, I know it seems like a small amount. But it just seems like, you know, when we're at this point, like people say COVID and every dollar counts, is this really a core function of Polk County Government to pay UW Extension to have a master gardener running around Polk County? So, I actually made the motion to remove that .25 position. Supervisor Dunkinson, would you like to follow up with your opinion on this?
Point of order.
Oh, sure, you want to?
Well, shouldn't we get a motion on the floor before we discuss it?
Yeah, we should. Do we have a motion to bring it to the floor, Supervisor Arcan?
I'd make a motion to amend the budget or remove the funding for this position.
Second by Mr. Ruck. Okay, now there can be a discussion. Stop me a little quicker there, Russ, next time. Supervisor Dunkinson?
Yeah, since, since General Government met, I have been contacted by one of my constituents who is active in this program, and I've learned a lot more about it and a lot more about what they do. And they do good work. They do educational things as well as training and advice and a resource. And I think that for the $10,000 it's costing us, and considering, you know, we are increasing some funding to some other things, I recognize that this has value, and I would like to see that funding restored.
Thank you. Supervisor Middleton?
I also have experience in Osceola. We have several master gardeners that regularly work in our downtown area, and the gardens that they work on are incredible. And I feel like it's a kind of a quality of life thing. I think it's important to train people in on this. They don't do just gardens. They're not just doing pansies. They're often doing natives. If somebody wants a pollinator or restorations, so it's a little more extensive, and I would agree that we should support it.
Sure. Any other comments? Motion and second on the floor, Joe?
I've seen these gardens and stuff, and yes, I, they're beautiful. But are they practical to the whole communities, outside community? I don't think so.
Any other comments? You called a question for common? Okay, all in favor of the motion by to eliminate the position, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carried. Position will be eliminated. Okay.
All right. Just for clarity, for the record, just so we have the numbers on record, we're adding $10,000 to the levy for the ScanPro. We're adding $15,000 to the levy for the museum director. We're deducting $10,583 from the levy.
Hold on, Chad.
I'm sorry.
Hold a little slower.
Okay.
It was 25 to the museum director.
10 in the bunch are ready.
Well, I'm just talking about what we're adding, sir.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, so $15,000 for the museum director. And we're deducting $10,583 from UW Extension. So, that has a net effect, we're adding $14,417 to the levy, which brings the new levy to $22,373,953 for 2021.
All right, do you need a, now, do we need a motion to approve that new levy budget? Is that all we're looking for? Is there any more presentation or discussion?
The only thing, you know, you'll see in the other things, the items that we have put in the budget, if there are any concerns or questions. Haven't had them yet, but if you have them.
Yeah, if there's anything anyone wants to add to the budget or any discussion, Supervisor Middleton?
I just have a question. So, Vince, are you saying that this, so we went through this page, and then are you saying all these additional pages are funded, and then, yeah, okay.
Do you want to go through those, or are you okay if they're funded? Okay. I don't see any other questions. Can I get a motion to approve the budget? Joe Demling?
Second.
You got a second by Warren Dahl. Any other discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Carried. Call that unanimous. So, what's next?
Resolution.
5220 resolution authorized the purchase of 78.54 acres in the town of McKinley. That came through general, it came first through Environmental Services, and then it came through General Government.
I've asked Bob that. He's familiar with it, to kind of give us an overview.
Point of order, can we get it on the floor?
Yes, do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
You got a motion and a second. All in favor to bring it to the floor?
Aye.
Hey, Bob?
Well, I'll be brief. This is a potential property purchase for our, from our forestry department. This has been vetted and approved by both the Environmental Services Committee as well as the General Government Committee. We have an opportunity, at least the forestry program does, to purchase 78.54 acres in the town of McKinley. Some of this, most of the 78 acres are in wetland, roughly 46 acres are wet. However, 22 acres are mature oak, popular aspen. So, that could be potential short-term lumber harvest or lumber revenue. There is another 11 acres for some immature white pine and aspen. Those are longer-term harvest opportunities. The Clam River, furnished runs through that, those 80 acres. This is the impact on the tax base. Right now, those roughly 80 acres provide $1,664 tax base. Those will be lost for all units of government, including the town of McKinley and the school district, of course, the county. Forester Mark Gossman has mentioned this to the town of McKinley. The town of McKinley understands that loss of tax base, but approved this purchase. The assessed value for this roughly 80 acres is $101,000. In our policy document, which is, we have a 15-year forestry plan. And when we get an opportunity to acquire green space or public domain, we apply seven criteria to make sure we make an informed decision. One, does it improve management efficiencies? It does. Does it increase our county's productive timberland? It does. Does it conserve surface, groundwater, or protect surface and groundwater? As well, does it increase public access, particularly to water features? And by the way, we did, through the D's office, discover there is a 66-foot easement from 270 heading north. So, there is public access. It is adjacent to current county forest as well. And that is a big piece to the priority list. These lands are considered to be high in conservation value. As mentioned in the resolution, this purchase is eligible for the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Grant Program. What that is, it's a 50% caution. We need a grant to subsidize the acquisition price. The other 50% of the cost, again, it was assessed at $101,000. Well, we'll have to take out a 0% loan from the same program from the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Fund. They have a sub program where it's an interest-free 0% loan that can service the debt on the other 50%. Those loan payments are serviced by timber sales, back 20% of the annual timber sales paid for. So, there's that. The nice thing about that low-interest loan program, in the years where we don't have robust timber sales, the DNR will defer those payments until we can make those annual payments. So, that, that's it in a nutshell. I think it's a great opportunity to increase our public domain, increase quality of life, increase conservation. Again, adjacent or joins our current county forest.
Any questions?
Does that deferrals or charge goes with that DNR deferral?
I'm sorry?
Is there a charge that goes along with that DNR?
There is not. There's no closing costs. We do, our next step in the process is hiring DNR appraisal.
So, what is the actual purchase price?
We don't know. That's our next step, is to take, hire our appraisal. Identify the purchase price, negotiate with the landlord. We'll bring it to the Mermal Services Committee for their consideration. This is really the first step in a long process in acquiring this.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Carried. Supervisors announcements, just go by a raise of hand. Any supervisors want to make, Supervisor Middleton?
I just want to bring our attention to a couple of things in our emails. One is the Wisconsin Counties Association has given a more clear opinion about this whole fees and bonds issue that we've been going back and forth on. And they're basically saying fees and bonds are an option until the statutes are changed. We're still working under 2006. But that is one thing. If you have more information, I can get you this. It's buried in your email. And then, the other one that I have is some feedback on that Venture Dairy felony letter that went around. And I sent that out to you guys, but I wanted you to know that Malia, the DA, the Wisconsin Counties Association lawyer, and the Wisconsin towns association lawyer all agree that it was an overreach, inappropriate, et cetera, et cetera, that we would never face felony charges on doing our job in here. So, just a word of caution, because it's probably going to get heavier and thicker with the upcoming continuation of the operation ordinance discussions, that we should be really careful about reacting to stuff like that and making any vote changes. And it was dropped in our lap last minute, and I was very curious about it, so I did some research, and I just wondered if we're back.
Do you have any other comments from any supervisors? Seeing none, take a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Supervisor Kelly, Supervisor Rowdy. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.